No longer sunny summer evening. So, welcome. In the case of emergency, you can exit the building out the rear of the room, either door, and then down the hallway in either direction to exits. Are there any suggested changes to the agenda? Okay, we will keep it as is. Does anyone have any announcements?
Before you get too far, can I just make a quick procedural announcement?
Yes, please.
So, just so folks know, there are one city councillor here in person and two online. So that is a quorum of the council. Under the open meeting law, a body can be participating in another body's work as long as it is the work of that other body. So just an announcement that folks are here as men, as folks attending the planning commission.
Very good. Welcome, city councillors. I'm pleased that you are here. Do you have a question about?
There is not, but when you, if you do speak, please announce your name and yeah, that's, we'll record it as it comes.
And you can raise your hand when it's time and we'll.
Elizabeth Fitzgerald and Andrew Chalnick are online.
Okay. We are very excited to have Colin joining us tonight.
Yeah, hello, excited to be here, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to say a few words or just introduce yourself? Just to the commission, I know that you're, did you do this while I was gone? Okay, I'm sorry, I might have missed a meeting.
Uh, no, good, yeah, so hi, my name is Colin Lawrence. This is my first meeting on the commission. And yes, this background, yeah, you know, I've, I've been living on Bacon Street, down by the Shaws on Shelton Road for the last couple of years. And my background is in transportation engineering. I'm currently, I work in, I'm doing a traffic modeling research project through the University of California. And it's also done some transit engineering before with, or in San Francisco. And, but, yeah, so I'm kind of particularly interested in the transportation side of things on how that relates to planning, which is, yeah, well, took interest in the commission in the first place. Yeah, that's me, hi.
Welcome, Colin.
You have to push the talk on these every time?
If the green light is on, then it's on, you don't have to hold it. But if you don't want to turn it off when you're not speaking, then the green light will be off.
Oh, okay, thank you, okay, I see now.
Did folks hear Colin? Okay, great, well, welcome, and you are fully on for discussion, comments, voting. Other announcements? Anyone have any? Any staff report today?
I think we'll just go straight to the, to the items on the agenda, no staff report for tonight.
Okay, has our meeting been, our public hearing been warned for seven? Okay, so we are going to move into our public hearing on the draft amendments to the land development regulations. And? Do we need a motion to open the hearing? I'm sorry. Okay, a second, okay, we have a second from Paul, all in favor of opening the public hearing? Hi? Okay, we are unanimously into the public hearing. Paul and Kelsey, is there anything you would like to open with before we move to public comment?
Do you want to talk about the structure of? I'll take the paper tonight.
Sure, so we have, there's a lot, there's a lot in this packet, there's a lot of changes that were made. The, the general driver behind this is compliance with state statute. There were two statutes, or two acts that were passed, one in 2023 and one in 2024, they're very closely related. One is called S100 Act 47, or the Home Act. That was in 2023, this year, in 2024, H687, or the Be Home Act of 2024. Those work very tightly together, and the 2024 version is a little bit of, a little bit of correction, a little bit of clarification, a little bit of extra on top of the 2023 version. We have structured the amendments in a more sort of reasonable set of chunks, instead of just, you know, every single red line by, into 10 groups, really, 10 amendments that are then clustered into three groups. The first group is transportation, so that's LDR 2401 and O2, those are related to EV charging and transportation demand management. Those are not directly related to the state statutes, but they are related to things, projects that we already had going on, or, and/or, you know, development projects that felt logical to lump in with this group of amendments. The second cluster, we've called thriving neighborhoods and the Home Act of 2023 slash Be Home Act of 2024 compliance. Those are 03 through 07, and they go up in scale, low scale, medium scale, and higher scale mixed use, or higher, higher scale areas, and then conservation-related amendments, so that's both land use updates and changes to the transferable development rights system. And 07 is inclusionary zoning. South Burlington has had a citywide inclusionary zoning system, but the state adopted an optional program that just didn't mesh well. So we change, we were proposing changes to the city's version of inclusionary zoning so that it matches up with the state, and we don't have kind of mismatched systems that developers have to comply with, with both. The third category is a general streamlining of LDR process and standards and additional minor and technical amendments. So that's Amendment 8, 9, and 10. Those are things that have come up primarily in the process of doing all of the other work. 08 is primarily an overhaul of Article 15, which includes Article 15A, Article 15B, and Article 15C, which are all related to subdivision and master plan. 09 is streamlining additional things in the table of uses and further consolidation of districts. If you read through the spotlights or the full set of amendments, the zero through, the three through seven, all, well, three through, three through five, really, also contain consolidation of districts. So we took this opportunity to consolidate from the many district, zoning districts that we had to some, a fewer, a lower number of logical districts. So 09 is also related to that, but in a commercial context, in airport and airport industrial. And 10 is then just minor and technical amendments, things that we found as we were going through, small wording changes, punctuation changes, numbering, formatting, things like that. So, I don't know if people have, if it makes sense to the commission to kind of go in approximately this order. And then if, you know, logically, people would be able to stand up more than once if you have comments on more than one of, of these sections, but feels like maybe having the public comment clustered would make, make some sense and keep everything streamlined for the commission.
Is that acceptable to commissioners to take comments kind of in these chunks as laid out in the, okay? Yeah, okay.
And then just, just to lay out for anybody who's new, you will hold the public hearing, that is everybody's opportunity to pose, to give their feedback to you or ask a clarifying question. After the close of the public hearing is when you'll have your discussion and talk about any additional amendments recommended by staff or legal counsel. So just to sort of lay all that out.
And if there are any factual wording clarification of what language says, questions that are purely that sort of factual question, then staff is, is very happy to answer any of those questions from the public. If you venture into sort of legal interpretation, that's another, another matter, but.
Okay.
I think we did, we did that last, at the last meeting.
Okay, so in, in general, if you have questions or comments related to the transportation-related items, those were the, the first two on that agenda. If you have comments or questions on them, it would be a great time to raise your hand and we can call on you, and then you could come up to the podium to give your comment, or if you're online, we can recognize you and you can unmute.
And also in the room, both the podium mic and the mic at this table are connected. You might have to turn it on to see the green light, but whichever people are comfortable with, if you would like to sit or stand, that's up to you.
Thanks, Kelsey. Would anyone like to offer any feedback on the transportation items?
I have a couple of pieces that were submitted in writing, do you want to receive those after or just by topic?
Um, maybe by top, or, well, maybe we can pass them out now.
Okay, so here's one set regarding EV charging.
Okay.
And we can talk whether, yes, that is.
Yeah, and this is related to transportation, so this makes sense to have now, and
And you can review it in more detail in a little bit, but this was received today by the EV Charging for All Coalition, submitted to, staff sent to you by email earlier today. They outline four recommendations for going essentially further with your add-on to the, to the state residential and commercial energy code.
Okay.
In the, in the EV charging component, so that's, that's my one seconds, one sentence summary.
Okay, and then also, in our packet that we received, we did get two written comments, one of which, the one from Keith Epstein, or Epstein, is directly related to this transportation item, so I just wanted to acknowledge that we received that one, as well as one from Sandy Dooley, that's a little more related to kind of the next topic of housing. So those are in our packet already, we've seen those.
And I'm passing out a second one that is not transportation-based, it is, this is in the new C1 LR district. So when you get to that, I'll note what that is.
Okay.
These are brand new, these are.
The ones that were in the packet, been in the packet.
If they were in the packet, they're in the packet, if they're just handed out tonight, we've got them today.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm not hearing any specific comments about transportation, other than the ones we received in writing. So we can move on to comments related to category we're calling thriving neighborhoods and Home Act of 2023 slash Be Home Act of 2024 compliance. And there's quite a few changes in here, you can see the list of general categories and changes up on the screen and on the agenda under this item. Do we have any public comment or questions? Sandy, do you want to come up?
Thank you.
Just a reminder, Sandy, when you're settled, if you could state your name.
I was going to, thank you. My name is Sandy Dooley, I've lived in the city over 50 years, and I just want to start by congratulating and thanking all of you.
Is your light on?
Yes, it, it is, are you not hearing me? I just think this is a watershed moment in the history of land development regulations, especially with regard to things like going from how many residential zoning districts, 25 maybe, to, I think, four? Anyway, and lots of other things, I just, I'm, I'm proud to be a resident of South Burlington when I look at these. The, I, I think you're establishing a gold standard for cities of this size in, in these areas. So I'm not an expert, but that's, that's what I feel. With regard to the inclusionary zoning changes, there was one change, which I'm focusing on, and that is the bonus for constructing more than the required amount. And I see this as a major departure from what the current rules are. And I provided a couple of examples on what I gave you. I, I've been involved in the development of our inclusionary zoning rules from the beginning. And these, the current bonus, the intent of it is to provide an incentive to developers of market rate housing to go beyond the minimum. The people that develop affordable housing, they specialize in it, they do not need inclusionary zoning at all because their funding sources require high levels, high percentages, more than your, the double standard in here of affordable or inclusionary units. So this, this was developed to try to get market rate developers to do a little more and give them a reward, and result in more mixed income units in housing developments, which I believe is a city's desire. First example is under the current rule, 60 rental units on a five acre lot are 12 zoning. They're required to have nine inclusionary units, they get nine market rate units. Those nine are part of the 60. So that's a result of 69 units, that's our current rules, is this is rental development, 15% are inclusionary. So the developer adds seven units to the nine required, so we have, now we have 16. And they get an additional seven units, they get for every one additional unit, they get a one additional market rate unit. And so we end up with 16 inclusionary units and a total of 76 units in the development, and 21% are inclusionary. Under the current rules, I don't really know what the proposed purpose in the proposed rules, I mean, because I haven't seen anything that explains what I would consider a very high bar to get a bonus. So we have the 60 units on a five acre lot, rental units. With the 20% requirement, the minimum, they're required to do 12 inclusionary units. And the offset for, that should be 12, inclusionary units, is an authorization to build an extra floor above the five-story maximum, which I'm fine with that. The total units then is 60 units, but they do get an extra floor within which to build them. The, if they choose to add seven inclusionary units to the 12 required, they get no bonus whatsoever. Even though with 19 inclusionary units, they, or 32% of their units are inclusionary, compared to our current policy, in which 21% are inclusionary, and they get 16 extra units. So I just see this as, that your proposal is that in order to get the bonus of an additional floor, you have to do double, you have to do 40% of your development. That is a dramatic change, I don't know, that's a tremendous stretch for the private for-profit market developer to do on a voluntary basis. And I, I really question whether it'll be used at all. As I said, it'll automatically, virtually, I can't think of an affordable housing organization that will meet the 40% standard. They wouldn't get the money they need to develop the housing development if they did. So my proposal is to reduce that standard. I would suggest, even this, I think, is high, but anyway, say one-third, say, instead of having to do 24 in this example, have them have to do 16, four additional ones for the additional floor. We might get some developers that would do that. I don't think we'll get them for 12, an additional 12. So that's, that's my concern. With that, my other concern relates to Article 15, so I'll wait until that part of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other comments on this section of the changes?
This is the section that has anything to do with the consolidation of zoning districts, about dimensional standards in the low scale, or the mid, middle scale, or the mixed-use districts, anything to do with the inclusionary zoning, or the TDRs, or the conservation land use updates. So it's a pretty big category of anything that basically has to do with housing. So if somebody's got, yeah.
Do you want to come up, or either location?
Having introduced myself again as well, my name is Heather Sorin, this is my mother, Donna Little.
I apologize, but could you speak into a microphone because the people online can't hear?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay?
Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Yes, you, thank you for bringing the chair over, we should have two there.
Yes, so my name is Heather Sorin, and this is my mother, Donna Little. We are co-founders and owners of Happy Tales Pet Resort and Spa in South Burlington. Our address is 1045 Heinsburg Road. Good evening, everyone. So we may be coming a bit late to the table, because we're pretty busy people, but we, we have some questions about the zoning changes that are going to or being proposed, that are happening in our, where we, where we currently are located. And I'm going to turn this part over to Donna right now, and she can talk further about that, and I'll just jump in. I'm sorry, cannot hear us.
My name is Donna Little. Heather and I own Happy Tales Pet Resort and Spa. And we have concerns and questions about the zoning changes for our property. I think the very first question that we have is that in 2016, when we built our, when we purchased our property and built our building, we purchased as a commercial property, which was then zoned commercial, open space, and built our, yeah, open, what was it? Industrial open space zoning. Since then, it was zoned as R7-ND, and now they're proposed for a medium-scale neighborhood. My first question is, we understand that we will be considered a non-conforming existing use. What happens in the future to our property, it once, if it ever happens to not become a pet care facility? And is, is that the extent of the use of that building?
If we decide to sell, if we decide to sell in the future to someone, we're concerned about what businesses will be allowed in there. And, you know, we, we have an exit plan, and we'd like to know how that's going to affect us in the future.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. I think this might fall into the technical answer category, the Kelsey and Paul wonderfully volunteered to help us answer, so that we don't misspeak as laypeople.
Sure, so I'll start at Paul Connor, planning zoning director. At a high level, as you were stating, any use that is not allowed in a district, but that already exists, would become a pre-existing non-conformity. A pre-existing non-conformity means that you, as long as the business or a replacement business doing the same thing exists, you can continue indefinitely. So that, that's part one of your question, there's nothing, if the city chooses to change the regulations, it does not affect your present building and use in it.
As long as that person, or whomever has it, uses it.
As long as the use remains the same, so it could be you doing, with Happy Tales, or if you decide to tell, have it to, you know, Joyful Ears Cat Place, that would be the, the same use. As long as the use is the same, then it can continue indefinitely. In terms of changing uses, the, if, let's say, you decide to sell the business to some other entity that wanted to do something that was not the type of business that you are, then it would revert to the allowed uses in that district. So that's what, as a non-conformity, anything that is allowed in that district, at the time that that takes place, is what would be allowed.
So, I'm sorry. So we went into this property as a commercial property, and now it's being rezoned to a residential. And I'm not seeing this as a fair and just to us, that any future use of the building can only be any of these very few residential uses. The building is not even conducive to residential, it's a commercial building.
Just to clarify, make sure we're on the same page, is it, are they in the location where it would be medium-scale neighborhood? I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, I just double-checked on the map, and this is the table of uses, which is absurdly small in font. So let me see if I can make that any bigger.
And you know which column?
Yep, I'm just going to scroll up. That's not what I meant to do at all. It's the third column.
Okay, so the third column on the list, so as you suggested, a lot of residential uses.
It's all residential.
So there's a lot of Ps, which is permitted in the third column over, in other uses as well.
Commercial.
What line it, what?
Artist, production studio, bed and breakfast.
But now you're in the commercial section?
So are you allowed to do any of the things in the commercial that is listed as a P, as permitted? It's a residential district, but MSN is right here, and this, into this column, recognizing it's not, it's not too many, but there are uses that are listed in the MSN that are not residential uses.
Like what?
Childcare facility is not.
We don't have enough parking there, we're not even allowed, we have 14 parking spaces.
So what you're saying is that in column three, anything that has a P all the way down through the public?
Yes.
And the commercial?
So.
Would be, would be a permitted.
Yep, so if you look further down, limited neighborhood commercial, which is a new use, or it's an adapted use that's been added, would be allowed, which is small retail, small restaurant, things that serve the surrounding neighborhood in sort of scale and type. Personal instruction facility, personal or business service, recreational facility, indoor. Conditional is out for outdoor. That means in the transit overlay, which this is not.
So it, it is true that you're being moved out of kind of an industrial zone, because, so some of those kind of more industrial, very larger uses?
So they're actually not, no, that was what it had when they purchased, yeah.
Originally, so.
The current zoning there is R7NC, which is residential seven neighborhood commercial, which I can, I can bring up the current table, if that's helpful.
One of the things that we're excited about in this round is the limited neighborhood commercial new category, which it, the idea is that it. which the idea is that it's kind of a smaller type of business, but there could be many different types of businesses there. So, you know, it sounds like your property might fall into that category because it's not a giant building.
We're just under, we're just over one acre.
The cross size. What's the square footage of your building?
10,000. But the way it's built now would never facilitate any kind of residential use. So I know that I was not aware of the fact that anything in column three extends all the way down through the public and into the commercial uses.
Yes.
Okay, okay. My next and hopefully last question. How does this affect the large acreage property just to our north, which I believe is under consideration for a business park owned by J.L. Davis? Is he going to, because his property is also being rezoned to this neighborhood?
That's 855 Heinsburg.
835, yes.
And the zoning would be?
It would be MSN. It's the same zoning. And they are currently the same zoning as you, so it's being, you're both being shifted in the same way.
As well as Mr. Sannical's property behind us and beside us.
Yep. Anything that was R7NC is part of MSN now. So south of you is low-scale neighborhood.
So at a high level, large properties currently in the, in the district that you're, that you're discussing have the uses from the underlying district and are required to be a traditional neighborhood development, which is largely residential with a allowance for 5% to 15% of the property to be complementary commercial uses. In the draft, the underlying district changes to medium-scale neighborhood, which is similar but not exactly the same as we just went through. The, an item for your discussion later this evening is how you want to deal with the planned unit development types, the traditional neighborhood, whether to continue to have them be mandatory or whether they should be optional above a certain land. Functionally, it is principally a sort of adjustments to the design difference rather than a change of the scale or of the, the uses really. So that's your discussion for later, but it is principally residential both today and in the future with an allowance for some level of complementary commercial uses.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in. Hopefully that answered your questions.
It did, but doesn't make us very happy.
Just, just doesn't, not what we intended.
I mean, really, you're kind of, this, this whole plan.
It limits, it limits.
It limits our huge use of the property. So, thank you.
Hey, do we have additional questions related to this, this section?
Can you hear me?
There's somebody online who'd like to speak.
I'll wait.
Okay, who was it online that had their hand up?
It was Ryan, I believe.
Okay, Ryan, and then we'll go to the, the person in the room. Try to go back and forth if possible.
Yes, thanks. Ryan Doyle at Woodside Drive. That was a really interesting comment from the last speaker.
Ryan, do you want to hold on a second? We're going to raise the volume so we can make sure to all hear. Okay, try again.
Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, yeah, yes.
It was interesting hearing the last speakers because I thought we were moving toward a map that included more diversity of use and higher intensity use, especially along heavily traveled routes like Heinsburg Road, which is a state route and isn't very far from city center. And so I'm actually a little perplexed that it seems to have shifted back to include fewer uses. It does, I, I think their concern is pretty valid, and I wonder how that can be reconciled this late in the process to enable that lot to not be so limited in uses given its location. Could you hear that?
Yes, we heard that, yes.
So it looked like a lot of ears were straining there, so I couldn't tell.
No, you're making notes.
That table that we were just looking at with all the proposed uses in each district, where can I find the version, that's the current version of the existing?
I can send that to you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm just curious to see what changes are actually being proposed here.
Yeah, the trick is because there is a, there's been a pretty significant consolidation of districts. There's, you, what I would recommend you look at is the, what districts have been consolidated? And then what those districts previously allowed or didn't allow? Because when they're consolidated, they definitionally had to kind of make some compromise here and there about what was or wasn't allowed in the different districts that were consolidated together. So I can send you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Ryan. Go ahead.
My turn. I'm Clifford Thorp. I'm married to Donna Little. So I've had a great deal of interest in Happy Tales as it goes along too. So first question I have is this lady back here mentioned that, was talking about the sizes of these buildings and how contractors will kind of adjust to that. Is there any adjustment available to Happy Tales for size? In other words, if there's an expansion of the building, will the pre-existing conditions, conditional use be able to be expanded out? Or are they locked in to only that one acre that they own? Because a large appears to me that if somebody's going to build something large, one acre is going to be inadequate amount of space for it. Can the building go up and can it go out and still be conforming, non-conforming, available use?
So I'll try to answer it technically, so that, I think you've got two questions in here, so please feel free to correct me. The use is, as drafted, becoming non-conforming. The building itself, as a physical building, is, insofar as I know, conforming. And so the building, setting aside the use for a minute, can be expanded to the maximum allowed in the regulations. So whatever the number of stories is, the total lot coverage, that is not, we can go through what those numbers are if you'd like. The use of the animal care facility that's there today, that I believe is, are non-conformities do not allow for physical expansions of a non-conforming use. So the building can be expanded. Let's say it has personal instruction studio, which is one of the allowed uses in there. And that personal instruction studio, or the two of them wanted to add space, then they certainly could. Or if the current building was going to remain Happy Tales, but they decided to make an addition to also add a personal instruction studio as an addition, that would be allowed. The Happy Tales or a similar business in the future cannot be, cannot take up more space than present when it's a nonconformity. Does that answer your question?
Both of them, thank you.
It, it could actually add a, you know, a happy, happy dogs cafe too. You know, because the whole point, I think, and I, nobody really mentioned this, but a lot of this, because it's associated with the neighborhood, the idea is to, you know, not introduce a lot of traffic and parking. You know, that there, there are uses that are conforming with the residential neighborhood. And, you know, I mean, I think a doggy daycare certainly is a conforming. I mean, maybe that's something that could be considered. The noise is the issue, but it is a conforming use of the neighborhood.
Well, let, let, just to be technical about it, it is, non-conforming is what you're saying is that is potentially complementary. But it, but from, just to be 100% clear in a public hearing, as proposed, it would become non-conforming legally.
It is non-conforming legally.
Say it wrong word.
But yeah, just, you know, the, the idea of trying to, trying to determine what, what uses are complementary to neighborhoods. So if anybody has any suggestions as to other complementary uses, certainly could consider that.
The other questions I had, I believe, just definition of a medium-scale residential is obviously in the, in your latest plans. I should be able to read that there. Is that correct?
Sorry, what was your question?
The definition of medium-scale residential?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be in article five, four or five.
Right.
Yep.
Sorry, when you say definition, what do you mean? Just so we're clear.
Like the description of that.
Defining what, what it means.
So what it means in article five, what kinds of residential uses would be, would be in the appendix? So it'll say the types of, you know, multifamily, up to X number of units in a building, and the dimensional standards.
All right. And the last question, apparently this process usurps Act 250. Is that correct?
No, no, and so Act 250 is a state-level regulation.
Yep.
Municipal zoning is municipal zoning. Under the acts passed in the last couple of years by the legislature, there are certain circumstances where if municipal regulations are in place for, for certain, meet certain criteria, or if they are located in areas served by water and sewer and things like that, Act 250 is for certain types of priority housing projects lifted, removed. So that's not our regulations usurping or superseding, but there are conditions in what the legislature passed last year that said in certain circumstances, let's say in our city center area, for example, if the city has a certain designation, then Act 250 is way, is not applicable for priority housing projects.
So I apologize for this question then. So, so the changes that you've made in the plan about all of these small districts becoming larger districts, that didn't require, that doesn't require Act 250?
It does not directly affect Act 250 one way or the other. As I, as I said a minute ago, in what was passed in the legislature over the last couple of years, the legislature has taken steps to incentivize certain kinds of what they call priority housing, affordable housing. So in certain circumstances around the city and around the state, a project that meets that has a certain number of affordable dwelling units in it and things like that don't have to go through Act 250, but that is unrelated to our regulations. What the legislature also did was set new minimums for what municipalities have to do in their local zoning. It was in the same bill as the Act 250 bill, but it's two different areas.
And to answer a slightly different question, because I think I heard your question a little bit differently than Paul did, a municipality changing their zoning districts does not require Act 250 review by the state.
Okay. Thank you. How do you turn the light, the green light off?
Push it again.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Come on back up.
Hi, Heather Soren again. I'd like to just go back to the question that the gentleman had that was on Zoom, that he's, you know, said that we had some valid points and what can be done at this, at this time. And, you know, you asked us to, sorry?
No, what?
So, but nobody had any answer. We just skipped right over the answer.
So typically, so we might not have been clear about how this process works. So typically, we are really absorbing and listening. And then after we hear all of the comments, we'll have an additional discussion up here about like potential changes that we want to incorporate into the draft. So we're not necessarily, as a group, responding to each comment as we're hearing it. That might be a frustrating part of our process. I understand. Paul?
Can we invite them to go through the list of permitted uses and suggest some uses that they would want to see for their property that we haven't considered?
Yeah, I think that could be good. So it is always helpful for us to hear like specific suggestions. So I know that you're.
Donna, my mother?
I know, I just, my mom. Suggested that she hadn't realized that the Ps in the lower columns also were acceptable. So, I mean, we're going to be here taking comments for a little while, so I don't know if you want to like look at that list and maybe make some suggestions of things you really hoped would be allowed for your property in the future, is what Paul's suggesting. Like if we had specifics, we could.
Is that something we could present to you at another time rather than being on the spot tonight?
Can I just add one factual clarification? The consolidated, the R7NC that is the current zoning district and the MSN district that is the proposed zoning district has three changes. The things that are currently permitted that would not be permitted. One is office general, another is pet grooming, and the third is financial institutions. There's a few other things that actually went the other way, that went from a conditional use to a permitted use. But those are the three that have gone away. So those are the only three changes between what is currently allowed and what is proposed in the new district.
But we actually have a grooming salon, so we're still grandfathered in.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so to answer my question, would it be unreasonable for Donna and I to come up with a list and email that list to you? Or is it, we're, we're probably coming to the table too late. Okay, we, we're busy. We don't always have time to see and hear these meetings and what's going on, and there's so many changes, but clearly we're affected by this a great deal. And even the fact that we are, you know, you told us we are permitted for more uses than what we thought we were. Those are still not a huge amount of choices. It's a lot of bed and breakfasts and childcare and, and type businesses. There was a lumberyard that was actually going to go in there before us.
Yeah, so I think, I don't know how the rest of the meeting tonight is going to go. We, we do have the option to make changes and then pass on our recommendations to the city council. So I don't know that we can say right this second if we're going to talk about this at an additional meeting. Before anything would be official, the city council would also need to have a multiple, like another round of public hearings. So it wouldn't go into law tonight by any means, but it might be at the city council level before you would come back with additional comments. I think what Kelsey just said is, is helpful to me and may be helpful to you that the kind of three changes from what's in allowance now to what the changes are, the three things of office general, pet grooming, and financial, which is hopefully maybe less of a change than you had anticipated coming into the meeting. But I think the answer is yes. If you come back with additional comments, whether it's with us or with city council, I think there will be, the group will listen to your comments and so.
All right, thank you.
Hi. I actually have Emily Craznow. I have a clarifying question after listening. What kind of outreach was done to businesses or other people that would be affected by the changes from your committee or the council or, or the city?
This is part of the outreach.
Tonight, that's, so, okay, so no one contacted, like, again, I, I have compassion for business owners or other people who are very busy. We want to be a welcoming city to, to business owners. It's not an easy time to have a small business. So often, folks. Um, so often folks are really busy as as mentioned and and don't have the capacity or time to focus on these things. Um, so that's why I was asking if before this meeting, public forum, if there was any sort of outreach to people who'd be affected by the changes, what if they didn't notice that, right? And then there's one meeting where everything's going to be decided.
Um, so this is our fourth.
Okay, so you've had four public hearings.
I guess the other three, we technically called a listening session where we were taking comments. Um, so this is the fourth following a hearing, because it's maybe a little more official. Um, other paper, front page forum, from porch forum, um, um postings. I think there's been, and we've been talking about this for um, most a year, um, at our regular scheduled meetings, which get posted. Um, I mean, we try. Um, it is true, we didn't do direct mailings to every person in the city. Um, but you know, we're trying through these public um postings, the city newsletter to get them out.
Okay, thank you. It wasn't a criticism, it was just a curiosity. Um, and it wouldn't have to go to, I don't think everyone in the city.
Yeah.
Just.
And feedback is helpful too, like if there's things that we're missing or a place that we should be posting or talking to people, it's helpful to get that feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Yeah.
Uh, um, I think that some misunderstanding might be that the changes, changes to the LDRs affect a lot more the future use, um, not the current use. You know, so that every property that's already used has a certain use. It can continue to be that use, it doesn't change that at all. But I mean, for for this particular property, yeah, the density. I mean, they could build a lot more there. And I I understand that that's an issue, that that there's going to be some restriction on the type of uses that can go there. But in fact, they would be allowed to build more. So it's really a question of future use, not so much current use. And I think that's where the question was addressed, you know, what what can you do with that property in the future? So I I I get that. That makes sense to me.
Um, more comments?
Uh, hi, Representative Hyman. Um, sorry not to um keep going on this topic, but I'm actually here trying to find out some something else. Um, but this discussion line has um um, but of interest uh for me, uh, my district currently, I only have three brick and mortar stores. And so this might be a question um directed to Paul at the moment, but does uh the cider mill um business, um, is that affected by um the changes uh in this in a similar way to uh the dog daycare? I'm not exactly sure of how it was rezoned.
So it, the cider mill property was rose rezoned to low scale ne- neighborhood, so that was any, most most of the southeast quadrant that is where where any development is allowed is is a low scale neighborhood. Um, it was not R seven N C before, it was um SEQ VC.
Yes.
Village commercial.
Village commercial.
Yeah.
Um, the current use that is there would uh very would likely be, well, first of all, the current use would be able to stay.
Right.
But a similar use to it, um.
It becomes nonconforming.
Sorry?
It, I'm sorry, does it become nonconforming?
Um, not necessarily. I don't know the exact specs of the mill market, but the um, there is a the neighborhood commercial um, limited neighborhood commercial use is allowed in that district on that street, like in that location. Um, and it would allow a smaller scale retail outlet, the way that that mill market is.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if it precisely meets the limits on on square footage, but uh very likely something very similar to the mill market would be allowed to continue into the future. Um, so it would again, likely, I don't know the square footage, be not be nonconforming, if it meets the requirements of that use.
And um uh, it's got a new owner, I can't remember, it should be called Next Gen Automotive, which is uh adjacent to that. That could remain.
It can remain um the current, what is the use that it currently is, it would not be able to change to some, it would be nonconforming.
Right.
Yeah.
And so it it would have to stay a garage.
Yes.
Or
Or be converted to something that is conforming.
Thank you.
Hey, um, Sandy, do you want to?
Sandy Julie again.
Um, be- before we go further, can I just make one further clarification on the whole last discussion? It's a um, it's it's an important discussion that was just taking place, just to understand the current adopted regulations. The um Happy Taste Tales facility is already a nonconforming use. So the changes that were that took place in twenty twenty two um, that moved it from industrial open space district to the R seven N C at that time made it nonconformity. So it is not becoming any the the designation as being nonconforming not changed in this evening, the the importance of the subject is not uh any any diminished by that, but its current status is that it's already not conforming.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Wait, sorry. Be clear, what's what district was currently in? Currently, it is residential seven neighborhood commercial, R seven N C. And it is permitted as a um kennel and pet daycare, which is a different use than pet.
Oh, I see, okay.
Right, pet grooming is just pet grooming, um, there's no um keeping of the um animals during the day, there's no, uh, so it's it's a different category.
Yeah, I mean, in in under the industrial use, I I imagine when that, when that zoning was created, that all of Heinsberg Road could have been strip development at that point, you know, in terms of uses, right? And that was the desire to change it to a more residential use, the desire not to have strip development going all the way down Heinsberg Road. And just speaking as a resident, you know, I wouldn't want to see strip development with big parking lots going down residential. You know, in front of residential, so the limited size of commercial seems to make sense. Which is the.
Ethan. Um, I noticed, well, when I attended the um listening session on July fifteenth, I learned that the um transi- tra- traditional neighborhood development P U G was going to be optional in all zoning districts for that allow residential use when the development includes at least four but less than ten acres. And that the um traditional neighborhood development P U G, T N D, uh, would be mandatory um in situations in which the development included ten or more acres. I um, I was very pleased to uh learn that and it, I think you had some headings in your spotlights or whatever they were called, that talked about thriving uh neighborhoods, and I think that the traditional neighborhood development P U G very much promotes the development of uh thriving neighborhoods or supports them. I understand that Paul, in Paul's memo, there's a proposal to eliminate the mandatory use of the traditional neighborhood development P U G um and make it optional for developments of ten or more acres instead of it being required. I, one of the things that I think a T N D does is it promotes the development of missing middle housing types. Uh, it also, depending on the size, requires more than one housing type. Um, and it also facilitates the development of more affordable housing units and also sort of the cr- across the spike, the price spectrum. Um, and so I have to look at our rules and see, for example, we have an entire article that defines requirements that um we believe are necessary to promote uh the protection of natural resources. And so I think that, you know, we need to um look favorably on a requirement that would promote thriving neighborhoods, more housing types. Um, make affordable housing more likely to happen because of the multiple housing types and having prices across the price spectrum. So I'm I'm here to ask you not to change uh what is published in the proposed rules, which is that um, traditional neighborhood development P U Gs will be required for developments, ten acres or more. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. We have other comments or questions?
May I?
Um, Ryan, we have someone in the room we just called up, but you can go second.
Thanks.
Donna Little again. I just wanted to be on the record that when our property changed from commercial industrial open space zoning in two thousand twenty two to R seven N D, we never ever were told that it was done. We never were consulted, we were never notified that that was happening. So this is, there's a lot of shocking news to us tonight, that so many uses for our property have been eliminated. And I would recommend that those, the the people are required to, when they do a business or have any kind of um commercial activity, they're required to supply a list of adjoining property owners and or those who might be affected by and their business, so that they can be notified. And I I think that that's what you were talking about a few minutes ago, it's it's only a fair move. Because even even though column number three goes down through the um commercial section, when you compare it to what was in two thousand sixteen, when we bought the property, it's far less, there are far less uses. And um, as far as our location, we're located right on the highway. We have our own cut in, our own driveway. We are not um we're not involved in any of the neighborhood, neighborhood um traffic, except that we often have been told that we're the Butler Farm daycare, because so many of our clients come from the neighborhood. And we are a um, a service to the neighborhood.
I mean, thank you. Ryan?
Hey, yeah, Ryan Doyle, Woodside Drive. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I remember this discussion happening maybe a month or two ago. In particular about the the aspect of um pet daycares and trying to parse out how to best sort that into the zoning model. And it it seems like you you really did come up with the perhaps best way to do it. Um, especially when we think about existing neighborhoods and retroactively turning something into a commercial entity to serve the neighborhood, suddenly bringing dogs in would be weird. Um, but since it's there already and neighborhood can develop around it, it it does make a lot of sense, because it does serve a large neighborhood and is also close to a lot of um industrial, commercial uses where people would be going to work during the day. Uh, like Dyna Power, for example, which is a very large employer. And so since it doesn't really make sense to um perhaps make zoning changes, maybe it would make sense to put that parcel back into the commercial zone rather than having it be in the neighborhood zone, therefore allowing the um, for example, office conversion or whatnot. Um, just a thought of something you guys can consider, because I know that it is a big effort to try to not make more places nonconforming. Um, I heard what Paul said about it, having already been made nonconforming, but um, you know, I do empathize with how uh, you all know, this is dense material, these meetings are very long, it's hard for the general public to really access this stuff the same way until it comes up to the city council. Um, but I think you guys might have an opportunity to make some changes that ameliorate that before that stage. And for the people who were speaking and asking questions before, there are two city councillors uh online at the meeting, Elizabeth and Andrew. And if you, uh, for those of you in the audience who have concerns about the process, I would uh bring it up with them um and see if they can work. It is a city objective right now to try to increase uh outreach and uh your feedback will help them make those changes. So so please reach out to them as well later on. Thanks.
Great. Um, other comments or questions in this section? Okay, our um.
Um, this would probably be a good point before we move on to the next section. The other written comment that I shared with you um, was from O'Brien Brothers. Um, the district, for the most part, you kept the zoning boundaries where they are. Um, there was one shift that um was uh advanced, which is along Kennedy Drive. Um, the neighborhood that's large, that's the Hills Eastview neighborhood that's under construction was in the residential twelve district, that is proposed to become um MSN, mi- um medium scale neighborhood. At the corner of um Kimball Avenue and Kennedy Drive, that was Commercial One Limited Retail. The um, O'Brien Brothers approval, um immediately adjacent to that Commercial One Limited Residential Neighborhood is for six large scale, mostly residential buildings. Um, fifty plus dwelling units in each building, um including two of which have been built. Because the MSN um caps out at um twelve dwelling units in the building, the proposal was to ex- was to move the C one L R district to incorporate these six already approved large buildings. Um, the feedback in in uh provided to you, um, and Evan is on there, is that in doing so, uh, two quasi residential uses that are that were allowed in the R twelve um of um assisted living and congregate care become um not permissible in the um C one L R district. So they're recommending those be added. So um Evan, feel free, I just want to make sure we didn't go past that section.
And just as a very quick clarification, congregate care, assisted living and continuum of care facility are all the same use line. It's three different definitions, but it's all like if you, the way it's written now, if you permit one, you've permitted that whole spectrum.
Generally described as congregant.
Congre- well, congregate, assisted living and con- continuum of care.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Paul, I, first of all, I appreciate you guys hearing us um on this topic. Yeah, it just, it seems like it it sort of makes sense in this location. It it is uh accessed by public transportation. You know, it's a dense area. Um, I think it might have just been maybe an oversight um that it's it's not included in the C one L R. Uh, considering that the R twelve is going away, so we'd just like you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. And Paul, for making sure we didn't get past that. Other items? Or um we can move on to the third section of LDR amendments. Um, the section we're calling streamlining the LDR process and standards, plus minor and technical amendments. Or anything else that we might have missed? Okay, are we missing anyone online? Um, you are welcome to unmute yourself to get our attention. Okay, so the idea um is that when we're done with the public um comment, she still have another minute. Um, we will uh close the public hearing, and then the commissioners up here will have some discussion. Um, I think we have some input from the legal review, from staff, and we will have kind of general discussion at that point. Is there anyone else who wants to say anything?
Move to close the um public hearing on L D Rs twenty-four of one to twenty-four, ten.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on favor of closing the public hearing. Say aye. Okay, we have unanimously closed the public hearing. Does it make sense to hear about the legal comments first?
Um, I think what would make the most sense is if you all have any discussion that you would like to have about any of the public comments, that might make sense. So when it's fresh in everyone's mind and then we can move to the staff recommendations that were provided in your packet. Um, those, the legal and staff recommendations are sort of interspersed and we can point out which are which. Um, when when able to, some of it is kind of meeting a middle ground and both things are incorporated. Um, and so we can talk about that step, those staff recommendations second. Um, and then. There's a a few more cleanup things that we um have identified in the last day or two that um would also need to be discussed uh after that.
Would we pause? There were a couple like minor comments I want to make. Would that be a good time? There's comments I would have made as a public comment had I been in the public and would have talked up months ago if I'd been American Mission. So it's a couple minor uh. Comments on the uh item two. Would that make sense to make those now real quick?
Should be up to Jessica.
Oh, Jessica, sorry.
So technically, I'm in charge of the meeting. Um, it might not always seem that way. Um, and I do often defer to staff on technical items, but I think that makes sense to me. So you want to go ahead?
Uh, yeah, this the uh, these are kind of minor technical issues, but I or just a couple of things I noticed on the um. What was it called? Uh, the number uh, the the changes to the uh transportation demand management planning. Um, one comment I had was on the uh e-bike optimized bike parking. Uh, there were some things about how if you essentially are uh providing um. Charging points for e-bikes, you would get credit as a uh transportation, uh traffic demand management. Um, uh, one thing I noticed, however, was that it was mentioning that you could install the plugs on both short term and long term bike parking. And my concern with that was that uh, so with 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 the electric. Electric vehicle charger, like those things, they walk your vehicle, they're waterproof, you can charge indoors, outdoors. With E V bike, with sorry, electric bikes, the chargers are basically glorified laptop chargers. And using them outdoors would in. May maybe there's some brand that has a weatherproof one that I'm aware of, but in general. Uh, you wouldn't want to charge an e-bike outdoors. It's something that really does have to happen indoors. Either by garage or a lot of them have movable batteries for that reason, so you can bring the battery inside to uh charge them. So. Bringing that back, my concern was that uh short term bicycle parking is often just outdoor uh like is outdoor racks. And that maybe it would make more sense to restrict uh that that could only be applied to long term parking. Because I thought is that if 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 this, like uh essentially that would be, my understanding is what's clearly proposed, if you built a plug on the outside of a building. That would count towards e-bike charging. And while that could be used for an electric car for an e-bike, I don't think anyone would ever actually use that to charge an e-bike. So. Basically, just say, my long story, my proposal will be, say that e-bike um. Uh, e-bike charging, uh sorry, that adding the e-bike charger should only be in uh short, long term parking. Uh, is that, yeah, that was one comment I had.
So.
I mean, doesn't long term parking include that in the definition?
By definition, long term parking is indoors.
Okay.
Long term parking meaning things like in this bill, it's like employee parking, resident parking, that kind of thing.
So it looks like they've found.
Yes.
The location that refers to that in section two I double I there. I mean, I think it makes sense to address each of your comments as you bring them up as a group. So we're kind of just moving things along. So does anyone have any um?
These require D C, a D C output.
This is a wall outlet. Yeah, it's a normal wall. Uh, A C, these are A C, yes, A C, yeah. This this, you put, you charge them in nor wall outlets. Like charging e-bikes or charging laptop, you you want to do indoors, is what I'm trying to say.
Do you, uh, John, you have one of these, right? Do you, would, do you, what do you think about?
Charger is heavy, so you don't usually carry it with you. You know, I don't carry mine with me, but I don't, I don't. You know, if I were to take that, if I were to take it a longer distance, I usually would just bring an extra battery. With me instead of assuming that I can charge it somewhere else because you never find a charge, someplace to charge it when you really need it. You just have to know that you have enough battery. But I would, I would question, though, if it's covered. But if it's short term, but covered, would that, would that?
Well, I I have requirements, so I have requirements for short term. I don't require covered. Um, but long term, it does require coverage. I think you've picked up on it.
No, I think it's a good point because it, I mean, it could be dangerous. Um, yeah, you're right. Those are. It's it's a transformer and it's not an outdoor. I don't even know that it's an outdoor rated um um extension.
I I I've got one, it's a way.
Okay, so I guess um Paul and Kelsey, just for um. What would be the best, if we want to make this change, what would be the best way for us to do that for you to like get it recorded would be?
Because. Uh, straw poll as you go on these things. Um, you don't have to do a formal vote, but straw poll and we'll record the straw polls.
Okay, um, so how, so let's do a straw poll on. If you're in favor of removing the short term bike parking spaces for the e-bike.
Short term. Charge.
Yeah, charging. Um, does that seem favorable? That's right, right, a quick thumbs up in general. Okay, um, so we'll do that. Next one.
Um, and this is uh more just uh uh under a light note on the um. Uh, on the e-bike optimized bike parking. So I also know that long term storage, that ground floor offices. Uh, count as um long term bike storage, is my understanding of the long term bike storage. And my understanding of that, that means that a office with four, with five ground floor. Uh. Offices would autumn or 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 over thirty percent, whatever the um the standard was, would automatically qualify as e-bike optimized bike parking. So essentially, office buildings that have ground floor offices would qualify for that two percent reduction. I'm not necessarily saying it's a bad thing. I just want to make clear that's what we're trying to do because it may just be the offices are just. But that's it. I I don't think, I I'm not certain we need to change. I just want to make sure that that's what we're intending, I guess. Um, that's my comment there. Uh. Yeah, um, I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that.
Where where is that?
I was looking at the definition of long term bike parking, that private offices can't qualify as that, was my, was my understanding.
I think the idea was that, you know, if you get to your office building and you don't have to carry your bike up or down steps, you could just wheel it in the door. It would be acceptable.
And to be clear, this is private office spaces, not private businesses that are offices. So if there's like an open office concept, that's not a private office space. A private office space is you as an employee have a office, a like with a door essentially, or like an area that is yours that. That that has been shown to be, you can store a bike in there yourself as an individual.
I I I guess where my comment is coming from is that when I look at this. Like this regulation, if the idea is like, oh, anyone who's visiting this place should be able to charge your e-bike. But because private offices count as. Long term bike storage, then you could have a situation where. If you have just a bunch of offices in the ground floor that counts as e-bike, as as them building e-bike optimized bike parking. Even though it's not really available to anyone other than the people that actually work in that office. That that's, that's just my comment's trying to, that's what I'm trying to say. I'm not, I I don't think it's a big deal either way, but that's just what I, what why I was trying to say. Um, yeah, I just think, just think the doodle on, I guess.
Terminology, storage doesn't sit well with me. It would be long term bike parking.
It it is technically long time park parking is the term.
Yeah, storage implies you you leave it there and go away for three months.
I guess I was using parking, storage uh interchangeably. I, yeah.
It's like parking for the day. You know.
Um, yeah, uh.
I think it's a bit arbitrary, but.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, it's basically a way of counting points toward your transportation um a lot, and so.
Not.
I don't see how it's a real critical point, but I mean, I carried, I took, it depends on, it depends on the office. I mean, I. I took my bicycle up the elevator at college like for years and nobody ever complained and I locked it to my desk and it was open office. So. You can, you can put a bike anywhere, really.
Yeah, i- i- if no one else has got any, as no one else has any uh strong pains in this, I I, it's not a big deal here. Um, but, yeah. Same with, and final point I had, uh, very minor, a very big one. I was looking at the um parking size dimension requirements. And there's a lot of simplification. There was a uh pretty big table, I think it was like section three thirteen dash two G one. Um, and uh that, uh, so it basically changed a pretty complicated table of like. How much curb space at different angles you have and all that stuff. And yeah, I agree that changes for the better. We and just replace it with a simple stall size of parking spaces are ninety by eighteen feet. My only, my comment on it, however, is that nine foot by eighteen feet is a great, pretty good catchall for any kind of angled or perpendicular parking. It's too short for parallel parking. So uh basically, my proposal is with this end, just. I think it does still need to be a little more calm but nuanced and say like nine feet by eighteen feet for angled or perpendicular. And then. The existing standard for um parallel was twenty-two feet by eight feet, just because you you need to longer distance to back in. Uh, that was the existing standard. Um, and uh, you got either just add that line in that the existing standard and.
So I don't disagree with you.
Okay.
And also, the legislature this year in H six eighty-seven said a municipality shall define a parking space as nine by eighteen.
Wait, what?
It shall not be larger than that. So that is uh, while I don't disagree for with any of your assessments, that is not within our authority.
So the state effectively banned parallel parking unless you have a really short car.
Well, it doesn't say that they can't make them bigger. We just can't mandate it to be bigger. So a developer could build a twenty-two by eight if they choose. We just can't mandate it.
Okay, I see, okay.
And I think. Our working assumption in the planning field is that the engineers who design the spaces will design them appropriately.
Okay.
Um, we just can't mandate them to be larger.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
So it's, I I was. One of the, one of the interesting components of uh Act one eighty-one slash.
It's not confusing in my opinion, but uh.
Is it, is there the word minimum or something?
So the, we. May not require spaces larger than nine by eighteen is what the legislation says.
When we have in in that, I didn't, does it say minimum in ours? So it. Um, so it makes it a little more clear that someone could maybe go a little longer for a.
Oh, I understand.
Parallel.
Let's check.
Like, cause, cause if you say nine by eighteen, then us engineers are like, oh no, I guess I can't go bigger for parallel.
Yeah, that's my reading certainly, though, I guess, you know, that was just me to understanding.
No, you're right. And people are worse and worse at parallel parking. Like, my mother-in-law has never done it. She was in the car with me and I did it. She's like, wow, you can parallel park. I'm like, didn't you need to do this for your license?
Um, so as drafted, it says. Um, new parking spaces shall be nine by eighteen feet. So, and then we can accommodate a smaller one. Um. Maybe there's a way to write it to say.
I say outlets.
With that.
Yeah, or minimum or.
Yeah, it shall make it exactly nine by eighteen.
Oh, yeah, but then you say you may allow a smaller one. Maybe for a larger one for.
Yeah, I think, like, I'm happy to look at that. I am not, I would like to look at the state language again because it's, it may. Not be as permissive as. Well, I'll look at it.
Yeah.
I'll try, I'll try to do it as we can, but, yeah.
So, so as a straw poll, um, are people okay with um Kelsey making an adjustment based on the state language to. Make this a little more flexible if possible?
Yes.
Straw poll, yes. Okay, Kelsey, you can adjust to make it more flexible.
And by flexible, you mean allowing for larger ones if the applicant chooses.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because it already says it may allow for smaller ones.
Yeah, that's where I got to, I thought that meant not allow for large.
Okay, Con, was that all of them on your list?
Uh, yep, that's everything. Thanks for listening.
Um, sure. So I guess back to um comments, suggestions, follow up from the comments we received. Paul?
Um, first, I think we should make it really clear. To people that the only changes that we made in the land development regulations were to conform them to state law. And that we didn't consolidate uh the zoning districts with any thought of. Of rewriting the land development regulations or changing. Uh, for example, the issue of uh residential to commercial or commercial to residential that came up tonight. Um, and I think we're all clear about that, right? I mean, this is what we did. We. We made changes to conform to state law and we consolidated. And in the consolidation, we intended to do nothing to change the land development regulations themselves. Is this clear?
Um, I mean, I think we knew that there might be some minor changes because each of the. The districts might have slightly different nuances. So when you consolidate, there might be some changes between them, so.
It sounded like their problems went back to nineteen, I mean, to twenty twenty-two, right?
Twenty sixteen is what.
Are you in sixteen now? Yeah. Okay, so um, and my second uh thing I wanted to talk about is um, I don't remember which meeting it was, but it was. Away, a ways back, um, probably in, I don't know, anyway, but it was the discussion of. Um. A conforming residential lot size to commercial lot size at seven thousand square feet. Do we want to do that or do we? I want to do that, or, I mean, we were going to have a discussion about it the next week and then we didn't, we we haven't met since.
So that discussion has to happen today. It is in the memo for um everything, every residential building type under four units has to have the same. Um, minimum lot size. So that's a discussion that's in your memo to be teed up to talk about today. Um, there is also a proposal to have that limited neighborhood commercial use that's allowed in these residential districts to be seven thousand square feet. Which would match that, um, what's, it currently matches the three and four plexes. Um, but the commission does need to have a conversation. We can, you cannot keep it as. Singles and duplexes being five thousand square feet and threes and fours being seven thousand square feet. Um, so then a sort of second conversation can be if you want to. Then have the limited neighborhood commercial, I like sort of the other. All other non-residential uses be allowed on the same lot size, but I think you need to land on that lot size first.
Okay. So we'll have a discussion of that later, or do you want to do that now or?
Yeah, I mean.
Just got started with it. We might as well keep going, you know? Well, I I really have a question, um, because I I talked with Emily Krasnow about this issue and I said, gee, five thousand really makes sense for residential. Um, you know, duplexes and, and it seems, it seems unreasonable that. You know, we have to enlarge our minimum lot sizes to accommodate this. Regulation that the state probably never considered what they were doing to a place like South Burlington when they wrote that. You know, and what if they change it again next year and then we have to change it back? Um, uh, you know, I I just don't. I just think it's um. You know, it seems like the seven thousand square foot makes sense for commercial, but five thousand really makes sense for residential. And why should all residential lots have to be seven thousand square foot minimum just to accommodate for four plexes? That just doesn't make sense.
And to to.
We go down to five thousand four hundred for. Residential.
Presently in the draft, um, single and two um unit buildings are five thousand square feet. And three and four plexes are seven thousand square feet, but as Kelsey alluded to, under Act one eighty-one that was just passed last month. One through four units in a building have to be on the same number. So you have to choose.
They have to be allowed to be on the same number.
Yes, they have to be allowed at the, in the regulations to be on the same number. That doesn't necessarily mean. Yes, they have to be allowed at the, in the regulations to be on the same number. That doesn't necessarily mean it gets achieved.
It doesn't mean to, it doesn't have to be practically possible if you're setting a minimum.
Well. It is possible, but not, not, not every case has to fit it.
No, I would disagree with that.
In our deliberations here, we reduced it from seven thousand to five thousand.
Mm-hmm.
It had always been seventy thousand prior.
Yeah, it had been ninety-five hundred in the, it's currently ninety-five hundred.
I also mentioned the personal experience. I uh I actually looked up in response. I lived uh back, I was living California in Berkeley, which is a area that's actually been. Often criticized for not being nearly dense enough.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I was in, I was living in a uh, it was a whole rez uh neighborhood where a lot, I think the lots were all about fifty-four hundred square feet or so. And I was in a single family that'd be converted into a duplex by splitting into levels. And then an accessory dwelling unit um was in the backyard. And so effectively, it was a triplex on a fifty-four hundred foot. Lot in a quiet residence neighborhood, you would have never noticed it from the front. It, so you get, it was like a, you know, a. Like two-story building, pretty small and I don't know, I don't, I, I mean, it, it's definitely uncommon to see that kind of density, but it. Felt like a pretty quiet, charming neighborhood. I don't necessarily think by, I, I was sort of saying, did he have a triplex and a fourplex and a five thousand square foot lot? Doesn't strike me as that crazy, especially given that we already have setback requirements, coverage requirements and height requirements. They're not stopping anything huge and that people might not want to see is, at least that's my take on it.
Right. So based on that experience, do you think maybe four could. Fit reasonably on that size? I mean, it sounds like that was a little bigger.
I mean, I guess I'd have to be on the setbacks. So I mean, I guess fundamentally. You know, if you can fit a three thousand square foot house on it, you can put. Four seventy, seven fifty unit, seven hundred fifty square foot uh studios. Um, do you have a question? Am I saying something incorrect here?
No, no, no. I just wanted to step in and just make sure that everybody is clear. When you set a minimum, you don't, it doesn't need to actually hold the thing. It is just being, if you have the ideal lot. That you could end up having the thing on it. Like you could, we've. You could set the minimum lot size as a hundred square feet. Nothing can actually be built on a hundred square foot lot. But that's the minimum. That's not saying that's what the lot has to be. So you could say, so if you said five thousand square foot. Um, minimum lot size for, you know, ones, twos, threes and fours. You don't have to practically be able to fit a four plex on a five thousand square foot. Lot and especially you don't have to be able to fit it on every five thousand square foot lot. So just putting that in context that it doesn't have to be. Practically possible in every case. It is just an allowance if a person can make it work with, as Colin said, the setbacks and the coverage requirements and other things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as, as an example, in the Burlington neighborhood code, um for the same single, two, three family, those low-scale neighborhoods. They eliminated minimum lot size altogether.
Yeah, I mean, that's some of my thoughts, like.
They regulate it in a different way, but they, the lot size is, is.
It seems to be the other, other mechanisms like setbacks and coverage are, like, I can't see the five thousand actually ever. Or rarely being the limiting factor, I guess.
In this draft, we've actually done that with large multifamily. There is no minimum lot size because. The coverage requirements, the setbacks, the storm water that's required, civic space, there's a lot of other things constraining the size of a building. Um, it's not required to be any particular size.
So my, my issue with it is that I live on a seven thousand square foot lot and. I would not want to live on a smaller lot than I do. Um, I, you know, and I wouldn't wish it on anyone else, you know, so. Uh, you know, that's my point of view, I guess, is that it's a. It's a pretty small lot. As it is and uh. I think uh to. Uh, encourage uh. I don't know what genteel living, I think that's probably the lot size we should have.
I guess my response to that would be. Like, it's, it's more so allowing people to build that if they want to. Like, I'd be quite happy to have five thousand square foot lot, you know what I mean? Like. I mean, I, I, I've lived on five thousand square foot and it was fine. I guess it's. Sort of let the market do what the market does. And you know, I, I don't think there will be lots on this side. He's like. I don't know, like, you know, I have a friend that lives in a two hundred fifty square foot studio apartment. I would hate to live there. She loves it. And I'm glad that that exists for her, you know, so I guess my temptation is that I totally hear you. That a five thousand square foot lot is definitely not for everyone. But I think it should be allowed for the people that do want it. And honestly, most slots won't be that small because most people. Like you don't want that, but at least that would be my, my response, but yeah.
It's about an eighth of an acre, which is a very common. Size for a, a development.
Mm-hmm.
It's actually a little bit bigger than that, isn't it? Yeah, a little, it's like seventh of an acre and I have a sixth of an acre and I think I have lots of land. I mean, for a single family house.
I think.
And you could, you know, I think it could easily be duplex. So I would just assume leave it as five thousand and.
And. But um. So John, I think the question, and maybe even what Paul's getting at is. Maybe that feels comfortable for a single or duplex, but. With this new state rule. Would it also be okay for a small multi up to a four, four units on that?
I would say, I would say if somebody's creative enough to come up with a way of doing some very small affordable units. Four of them on a five thousand square foot, we should let them.
I, I want, what are the other ads? I um, so I moved there two years ago and. Wow, finding a apartment was hard in this area. It was actually uh way more difficult than it was uh when I moved to uh San Francisco oddly. Um, and I was pro love like Facebook housing groups and, and the likes and. A big thing that the people that sort of get stuck, stuck in those groups are the folks that. Really, really, really just want a tiny studio. Cause you had a lot of folks that are like, you know, in their thirties, still. Living who, who I can't afford a large one-bedroom unit uh but on their salary. And are just sick and tired of having roommates. And a lot of people, I don't care how tiny it is, I just don't want roommates. I just want the smallest box I can give me. And there are very, very few of those around. I mean, there's some, but there's certainly, oh, I do think there's some pent up demand that we don't really see. Because I think a lot of those people end up just getting roommates and, you know, moving with a couple other folks. So. I guess what I'm trying to say is I do think there's some pent up demand for micro units among people who are younger, who just. Do not want roommates and all they want is affordable and small. So. I guess that's, uh, that's my perspective and I want to enable. Small units when they are, and I think, and the lot sizing can stick. And I'm aware that this is not. Talking about like minimum capital size of the units. I'm aware that's entirely separate things, but yeah, that's, yeah.
I don't think it's difficult to put a quad, quad on, on five thousand square feet. Uh, it's easy, you've got two by two. You see them all, well, certainly in Montreal, you see that kind of thing.
Two down, two up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's doable.
Cause the footprint is in.
Okay. I guess I feel more comfortable with what Kelsey said, that it's um. Not required, it's allowed.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I feel like your lawyer perspective is very fun sometimes and helpful. Um, yeah.
There we can leave.
Any more thoughts on this? Are we ready for at least a straw poll?
Leave it where it is.
Um, well, so where it is, is actually varied lot sizes. Um, ranging between five thousand and ten thousand, just depending on the units. And then the proposed. Is five thousand for. This is page five. Um, so I guess the straw poll in favor of the proposed chart, which is five thousand. Square foot minimum lot size for single family through small multi four unit. Okay, in favor of that?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, so a split vote on that, but it um does kind of pass the straw poll. Um, other items people want to bring up for discussion?
Jessica?
Uh, hang on a second, Ryan. I'm just wondering if, would it make sense since that was split to.
Sure.
I think maybe just so that it's um clear later on.
Okay.
Since it wasn't unanimous that Paul can be formally on the record of not agreeing with it. I think that might be just sort of clean in a minute.
Um, I will make the motion to um. Have the total minimum lot size of five thousand square feet for a single unit building through. Townhouse and small U ten, multi-unit four units, all at five thousand.
Checking.
Okay, on favor? Hi?
Hi.
Anyone to post? Okay, one A, Paul? Very good. So passes into the draft. Um, next items people want to bring up for discussion?
Um, yes, what about the, the carve-out that went the way of all flesh with, with the uh conservation P U D? Um, on page. Where are we here? Eleven. No, on page eight according to this, but it's in the packet.
Okay.
So. The staff has proposed um that. The, 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 the two, a two acre. Um, subdivision would be exempt from. Um, master plan. And I'm wondering. Whether that is, that is intended to. Replace the two acre carve-out.
Effectively, yes.
Effectively, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I had also, or in our prior discussion of this many moons ago. Uh, suggested that we should have perhaps a, a sliding scale, that it's, it's a two acre. Subdivision. From up to ten, up to ten acre lot. And from ten to twenty acres, it may be three acre car, um, a three acre exemption. Um, and over twenty, it's a four acre exemption and that's. That's it. Cause it doesn't seem to, two acres, um. If, if somebody has that lot, a larger property, it would be. More fair. To have a sliding scale, not be stuck with what's, what's um. Allowed for four to ten acres. So. Give, give a, a landowner a little more flexibility.
In flexibility in the number of lots subdivided or the size of lots subdivided?
Size of the exemption.
It's the size of the exempted lot. They'd still only be allowed to do one lot broken off or you talk about multiple lots.
Yeah, we, we do say that the two acre exemption can be subdivided.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's written as a total of. Two acres being subdivided without having to go through master plan. So if you decided. You wanted to do, cut off the two acres and then subdivide it into eight, you ac, you actually could do that. Um.
You could or you could not?
Could, yes.
No, I, 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 I understood that, but I, I'm, I'm thinking that if, if somebody has a larger parcel of land. Um, then it seems, it seems reasonable to give them a larger exemption.
I'm surprised.
Mm-hmm.
That you would want this.
Well, it, it, it's a question of fairness. I mean, uh, let's say it's ten acres and he has two. So it, it's twenty percent, but if he has. Twenty acres and it's two, well, it's half that. Percentage of the, of the parcel. And even less if he has more than twenty acres. Just uh, suggestion. I know it doesn't.
Yeah, I guess I am. I mean, I, I'm open to discussion, but when I was thinking about this exemption, I was thinking, okay, two acres is.
Which is what we have.
Is discreet. I can picture two acres. I guess when I start to picture maybe like a hundred acre parcel and like. Ten acres, that feels.
Still four.
That feels big.
No, it would still be four.
How would it still be four with what you're talking about?
Anything over twenty acres is four.
Oh, you just made that up?
No, I mentioned it.
Like a second. Like a second ago.
Ten acres is two.
I, I guess.
Ten to twenty is three, over twenty is four.
Am I, am I correct in understanding that the purpose of this is to carve out a lot to essentially build on and potentially conserve the rest of it? Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah.
I guess the question is. It. You could put a pretty big house on two acres and a lot of outbuildings. I guess I'm wondering. It, how necessary is it to have a. To make, make the language more complex to allow someone to build on. Carve out four acres. For. Building a residence versus just two acres, which is still a, you know, a substantial.
Well, there's no reason to assume that there'd be one residence on, on two acres or on four acres.
So Michael, just as a point of clarification, the only thing that this does is exempt a landowner from the process of master planning. So you could. Do as many, um, you could do additional development of the rest of your property. Um, but you would just have to go through that master planning process. So it is, it's a procedural exemption more than anything that mirrors the. Purpose of the um carve-out on for conservation P U Ds that, that was, that were eliminated. Um. To, in recognition that there are a. You know, maybe two handfuls worth of property owners in the city who have ten or so acres um. And to be able to subdivide one. Additional area before going through a big sort of development process. Um, just wanting to clarify that that's the, that's the only thing that changes is the, is the amount of process that you have to do for that. Small carve-out.
Yeah, we have, we have one before the D R B right now with. It's a sixteen acre lot. Um, and since these regulations haven't been. Promulgated yet, it, it, the old ones um apply. So there's a two acre carve-out for that particular applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But if the commission feels that two acres is the limit. Then we shouldn't um. Relate this. Uh, exemption to the size of the overall parcel, then. Um, I'll accept it as, as being the replacement, but uh. Uh. It seems to me that somebody who's got. Over twenty acres. Uh, should get more than the, than the two acre carve-out. Not weighted to it, but I think it's fair.
Um, does anyone have thoughts on Michael's proposal or what's in the packet? I get, I guess, I like what's in the packet. I felt like this was something that was maybe missing when we got rid of the conservation P U D. Um. You know. I don't have ten acres, but if I did, or if I had sixteen acres, it'd be nice to be able to kind of go through a low-tech process to do something, a portion.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and I guess I feel like a portion being two acres seems like kind of a lot of land. Um.
Sir, this, I, I think you're right, since, but so the current. Single, the, the current carve-out is two acres, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I guess today's, we're not actually. Removing any ability to use the land with this, are we? Like, we're sort of keeping the same, but four acres is expanding the carve-out from the, from the state's quo. I just want to clear about that.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, yeah, okay, thank you.
But this, this here um is kind of missing from the current draft, cause we, we kind of removed a section and then it didn't get put back in.
Gotcha.
This is kind of.
So, yeah, what is effectively in the draft is that if you do, if you have a certain amount of land, if you want to do anything at all. You have to go through the whole master plan process that involves a lot of engineering and a lot of expense. This sort of puts back in that ability to do the like. I want to carve off two acres for my kid to build a house, like those sort of very small scale um. Low-impact subdivisions.
If, if you decide to adjust the number, we recommend um giving staff the opportunity to look where the cross references are. So for example, in subdivision, if. Uh, a subdivision of more than two acres in size must include a civic space. Under two acres, you don't have to include it. So those numbers are meant to match up so that a, beyond that. You would, you might want to do a master plan since you have to include a civic space in it. So if you just choose to follow something that would. Um, have tiers, um, we request the ability to um. To examine the cross references and um. You know, come back to you with, with some recommendations.
I mean, what's written is, is more or less what we've, limited discussions we've had. So.
Um, also, um, I can bring it up in mapping, but I don't have to. We identify that there are a total of, I believe, twelve. Eleven or twelve total parcels in the city with more than ten acres of developable land. Eleven or twelve total parcels in the city with more than ten acres of developable land.
In a residential allowed zoning district.
Right, in 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 a residential allowed zoning district, and of those. Um, two of them don't have ten acres contiguous of development, it's sort of split up, so there's really only eight parcels that. Um, eight or nine parcels that fall into this category total. Above ten acres.
Yes.
Yeah, not not to say that, not to say that those aren't valuable properties, I'm just.
Yeah.
Discussing the scale of the subject.
Yeah, how large are the larger parcels?
Um, there is, there are two, one to two that are over fifteen acres. Of developable land, um, up to sixty. Um, the rest are between ten and fifteen.
So, first, I thought it would be for creating a carve out for land, oh, for properties over twenty acres, that only applies to one or two. Like, it 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 sort of sounds a little spotzony to me, if it only actually applies to two parcels, like, that's.
And hold that thoughtful when we talk about T N Ds, because that's.
That's.
Yeah, we're doing a great job of jumping around tonight here. Um. Which makes me wonder if we need to kind of go in order of the packet here in some way, where.
Can we address, one of the, can we address one of the things that came up in the public meeting?
Let's do it.
Great, that's where you started your whole discussion.
Seems like that's where we started out, and and I think it would be probably worthwhile to go through the list of commercial uses allowed in the medium scale residential. Because, I mean, I I think there are, there are probably uses that would make sense there that I don't think we're allowing. And one of the ones I had thought about was um, uh, well, I'm not sure if this is considered general office, but. Um, you know, and I think I think it would be really. Kind of very convenient to have a a commercial. I'm not sure what they call it, it's like rent a desk kind of things where, you know, for people that have families and they just don't have space in their house, or you have a small apartment. And you want to be able to have a place to work and not have to maybe drive someplace to get to it. Having a convenient, um, you know, small office, you know, rent a desk kind of thing, that would be general office, wouldn't it? And yet we're not allowing general office in those in those locations, and I think it, I think it actually makes a lot of sense. Because the the size of the building is definitely limited. You know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be having large office buildings and you wouldn't be having. You know, a lot of parking for something like that. Um, I think the dog care makes actually a lot of sense as long as there's noise control and, you know, there's not a lot of overnight boarding and stuff like that. You know, like, I know the doggy daycare thing, they had problems with noise there, but it was specific to a tenant that was right next to them. I think other than that, if the other tenant wasn't a yoga studio, it would probably wouldn't have been such a big deal, right? Wasn't that the issue?
Didn't you just suggest they could put a yoga studio in their expanded building?
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, there's other, there's other commercial uses that I think could make sense.
No.
What in 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 that M S R, you know, it's exactly the issue they were talking about.
Um, can can we pull up the definition of limited neighborhood commercial, because I'm a little unclear on exactly what that. Means here, like, for example, like, would a couple of small co-working spaces, is is that neighborhood commercial, I I?
Yeah, I love that new zoning district.
Okay, hang on one second.
Yeah.
Um. It's it's not a catch all, but it is like a category that includes multiple uses. Based on size, that'll be a good one to review.
One moment, please. Okay.
I want to become a lot more familiar with this document.
Okay, it will probably take more than a week.
You're doing surprisingly well.
Yeah, I mean, as as we're getting units and units that are smaller and smaller, I think that there's probably more types of space that people might have to. Might have to rent. Able to.
Yeah, this is a new one now.
Oh, okay.
I mean, storage is another one, you know, storage space is another one, it would be really convenient to have. Storage space lo- located really close, not necessarily those big big garage type storage units, but. You know, just a a small scale neighborhood size business that you can store.
No.
All that extra stuff you didn't really need.
I guess there's two questions, though, that.
So this is the list in here of what falls under limited neighborhood commercial use, this was developed a few years ago for a limited applicability. Um, um, and then was sort of modified in this draft, uh, well, over the last few months of. Uses that are customary and historically to be um. Well, not customary historically, intended to be very focused on serving its immediate neighborhood. Um, to the extent that zoning can. Um, you know, somebody creates the the best bagel shop in New England, it might serve more than its local neighborhood, but to the extent the zoning can. And it's it's limited by the uses and capped by the size here. Um, and it's it's proposed to be allowed essentially on all. Um. Anywhere in the low or medium scale neighborhoods, as long as it is on a collector or arterial street.
Mm hmm.
Though I guess the point, so so for the particular speaking earlier, this wouldn't. They were saying they had a ten thousand square foot building in this case, so that wouldn't really be. You'd have two twenty five hundred square foot uses, but you'd only use that half the building under this.
And then the other half would have to be something that is otherwise allowed in the district.
Okay, well, I see, so you'd have to.
So, for example, personal instruction facility is allowed in the district, period. Um, because it's the medium scale, so that could actually be more than that in this instance, or it could be a childcare facility, or it could be some of the other ones.
Except it does say there's a maximum of two uses per lot, including.
Limited neighborhood uses.
That's not what it says.
Oh.
Two uses per lot, including residential, so if you had a first floor corner store, you could have two apartments above it or something like that.
Okay.
What about concierge medical care? I understand that's a real thing now, expanding. I mean, I I think that there's a lot of small offices.
That so the difference.
Small office types that could fit into this category.
In the previous um discussions of this category, the the real crux of the issue was. Is it, and you you mentioned it earlier, actually, like, is it something that will be drawing people to this location from elsewhere or not?
Yeah.
Um, the intention here is that it is something like um a bodega sized small market where you have one and then you have another one. Six blocks away or ten blocks away. Um, oh, there's a lot of other uses that you wouldn't, we'd like, for example, we considered medical office, but. Um, someone who doesn't choose their medical office necessarily based on the one that is closest. They choose it based on the one that they like, or that has a certain specialty or whatever it is.
Or it has an opening.
Or has an opening, yeah.
Beauty salons, nail care. Um, uh.
I think this.
Dog care is really one, I mean, that makes a lot of sense for a neighborhood. Because, you know, especially a big neighborhood, you know.
When pet grooming is allowed in that district, period. It's just the kennels and.
Oh, right?
Not in the.
No, I think it's.
That was, that was a change.
Our seven N C allowed it.
That one does make sense, I can understand the kennels not being there, but that's 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 good. But but, you know, certain types of small office um rental space.
I think we just want to.
Makes sense.
This is your choice to do as you choose, just a recollection that this is a pretty seismic shift already from what is in the regulation.
But you might as well.
I know, I just want.
You want to.
Feedback forgetting is about a district that happened to previously be industrial, just a reminder that this is all low scale neighborhoods.
Right.
Um, including Chamberlain Neighborhood and cider mill and and orchards, any, well, orchard's tricky because there aren't. Collector or trailer roads on through there, but anywhere where there's a collector or arterial, it would be allowed. So I just want to make sure that you're aware of the magnitude.
More about the future neighborhoods, I'm not thinking so much about the existing neighborhoods, as where the, what would the future neighborhoods?
I think there's a difference possibly, Donna, in what is allowed as under these limited um. Conditions and what is allowed in this sort of mini catch all versus are there other uses that you want to just have permitted? You know, do you want pet grooming to be permitted? You don't need to fold pet, you don't need to fold everything that you want in in a neighborhood into this use, you can just allow it in the district.
So Donna did suggest actually pulling up the table.
Right, just ask the table and just say, yeah, these 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 probably should be allowed.
I guess we declared, though, part of the thing is, though, that this district is much larger than. This one property, like, it extends some very quiet residential streets too, so I guess we need to consider, like, the entire. Like, it's it's a very large district, so we've got to consider in this case.
But it's not the in, it's not the entire district, it's just the portion that is on an arterial road or it's on the corner near an arterial arterial road, that's.
So that's that's, it's two different things, there's, the arterial street is only this limited neighborhood commercial use. If you allowed pet grooming as a permitted use, it is not restricted to arterial or commercial. It's only if you fold a use into this. Small use category.
And you folded it here, it would be a moot point for them anyways, because as we pointed out, they, you know, that's ten thousand square foot facility anyhow.
And to be clear, they're not pet grooming, they are a.
Right, right, right.
In this one instance, it is a separate category, they have an outdoor exercise yard, which is the biggest difference.
Yeah, it's a bigger, bigger use.
And that's one of the big things, which, right, is that the noise, the outdoor issues, is the, yeah, why, it's why.
Those are a challenge with kennels.
That's why they're two separate categories, the grooming and kennels, correct? Gotcha, yeah.
Right. Um. Well, I'd call it the, I I'd put it in the limited neighborhood commercial use, I wouldn't necessarily have them. Um, you know, it would have to be a much more urban neighborhood for it to work, I mean, because, see, in my mind, I'm picturing. A truly medium scale urban neighborhood, and what would be nice to have? If I lived there, what would I like to be able to walk to? Besides cafes, which I don't go to very often, or restaurants. Um, personal instruction facility, yeah, yoga studios, that kind of stuff, that's nice to have. But I'm thinking people who have a small apartment would really like to be able to go to a workspace that's close by, particularly since more people are self-employed now. And this is not an allowed use here, and I think it should be, and pet care isn't an allowed use here, which I think it should be. Hair salons, I don't know. It's just, I think this is more restrictive than it needs to be.
So if a framing question for you all, given where you are in the process of, you know, this is the public hearing is. Um. Every time that the planning commission makes amendments and the council adopts amendments, what I tell the public is, the only thing I can be a hundred percent certain of is that these are not perfect regulations.
Right.
So I think a a question for you, big picture, on the commercial side, you decided that. Um. You would sort of align the residential types and building types, but that. You wouldn't try to tackle consolidating all the different commercial uses because it was just another project. Beyond what the purpose of Act forty seven was, I think a question for you all is, none of these are bad conversations. Are they conversations to be had now with this draft or to consider in your work plan for a future round of amendments? So that's, I'm just going to frame it that way, and that's your call, what you want to do.
Well, the reason I'm bringing it up is because, you know, three people who are very much affected by this decision came here tonight. And I think it would be very nice to give, you know, to give give that some consideration. To the degree that we can at least allow for some additional uses. Um, that seemed reasonable.
I guess the tricky part in this situation, though, it sounds like they're primarily affected by the legislation in twenty twenty two. That that was a more radical shift for how their uh you their law was owned, that this is actually a pretty minor one in comparison.
Well, no, I think what they're saying is that if they can't find somebody that wants to go through what they went through with his. You know, it's it's not an appropriate use anymore, but there aren't a whole lot of other uses that they see that they could convert their building into. You know, if it's, I think that's what they said, I'm sure that's.
Well, they did say that, but then they hadn't read the table completely, so they.
Right, but then they do read the table, it's going to say no office use, right? It's going to say no hair salon use, it's going to, uh, well, I don't know if it'll say no hair salon, probably does allow that. It's going to say no pet grooming.
I guess I see the argument, this is a somewhat bigger question, I guess, that. Might be hard to resolve tonight.
Yeah, I agree with that. I do agree with that, it it is hard to resolve it, but I would just like to give them a little bit. You know, a little bit more than what they've got right now.
Maybe we should ask them, what are the kinds of uses that they would like?
Well, we did.
We did ask.
But they didn't say anything.
I was surprised they didn't come back with.
Well, I think they didn't know, because they weren't prepared for that.
I think it's more to see what the lot could be converted to, should they sell it, was there a main concern? Like, the more the more uses a lot has, that gives it value, like, with my with my understanding of their concern, not that they want to convert it, but they were potential buyers, what they might.
Yeah, well, and I think, I think on the record, we should just encourage them to come back to the city council and say what kind of uses they would propose there.
We we did do that.
Yeah. So, I guess we can leave it at that.
I guess what we're.
Well, I, okay, I I know the council's expectation is that you guys vet and give your recommendations, so I guess I would say they're welcome to come to the council. But I, the council's expectation normally is that you've vetted what you want to do.
Hmm.
And that they'll say, you know, did you provide your comments to the planning commission, what did the commission decide? They they, generally, they prefer that you all come in with your recommendation and somebody else can provide additional feedback, but just to.
Yeah, and I think in general, we have, we have done that, I think they're in a strange situation where they didn't realize that their property got changed from an industrial district. To a residential district, so what we have done is look at the residential districts that we consolidated and said, do these uses make sense? Are we continuing to have similar and mostly the same uses in each of these districts with a few changes here and there? And like Kelsey said, there's actually only three uses that are different.
And one of them was pet grooming.
Yeah, and one of them is pet grooming, which is actually not the category they're in.
I know, but we could say, oh, you're allowed to do pet grooming.
If if you feel like we should say pet grooming is, I mean, you can make that recommendation to add.
I mean, just one other thought for you all, um, a while ago at the beginning of this process, or maybe before that, you had. Talked a little bit about the concept of examining the portion of Heinsberg Road south of I D nine. Holistically as an area, but felt that due to a whole bunch of reasons that it wasn't right yet as a conversation. Um, that came up when the rights came to you. Um, and you decided, you know, there's an interesting conversation to be had as a holistically looking at this area, but not yet. That might be, this property is in that same area, so just as a thought of a future thing to to look at, and there are. Other affected properties.
Can I, can I add something, because I I I forgot to do this when we were looking at C C R P C study plans? But Bike and Pet is also very interested in looking at this area um to um, you know, not only is for for um. Zoning, but also uh for reduction in roadway speed. You know, what changes to the actual roadway can happen to slow traffic down in that area, because it's it's a very, it's becoming a dense residential. A more dense residential area with commercial, lots of cross streets and everything, and yet the speed limit is still very high, so I I would. I would say, yes, we we should put that prioritize that as a as a C C R P C study. Um, for this coming year. You know, how how can that look, you know, what would that look like as a, you know? As a as a very different um kind of a roadway. And surrounding and surrounding parcels.
I mean, I guess the, just to make concrete, potential response, I guess I think of is. I do think that the whole, it sounds like there is some potential interest, and I I I'm definitely amenable to the idea of, like, at some point revisiting exactly what the allowed uses on limited neighborhood commercial are. Uh, though, I guess I don't think we have time for that right now, but that might be my response. Um. Uh, what people think, but I I I see what you say, that perhaps that list of four items maybe is a little short, you know, like, there's there's a old Grand Park and hair salon in the South End over in Burlington. Uh, like, kind of near the fire station, it's kind of just kind of tucked away in there, and, you know, it it blends nice in the neighborhood. Uh, I think, but I think this is a perhaps a future conversation that. I I would be interested in having, but of course, I uh know we have plenty of other things that are most important to work on.
Jessica, if we added pet grooming.
Ryan's trying to say something.
We're really trying to have a commission conversation, if that's acceptable.
Yeah.
That was how we laid out the meeting.
If um, if we had a pet grooming as in large use, would the non-conforming become conforming all of a sudden?
Because they're a kennel, they're not a pet grooming.
They could do pet grooming as well.
Well, yes, a kennel includes pet grooming, but it is not limited to.
So how would we bring them into conformance?
You would have to allow dog daycare or commercial kennel.
Need to do that, because they're already, they're already submitted as an existing use.
Um, I guess one of the other uses that came up was about the congregate care in the C one LR. Um, I saw a lot of head nodding when, when that came up. We got one of the letters about that. It's just based on the head nodding I saw at the time, um, with a straw poll or people in favor of adding congregate care used to the C one LR.
He said, senior housing or congregate.
And just for context, that's the area around, um, Kennedy and Kimball. It's right in that.
Okay, on favor.
Is this only applied to this one area?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, do it.
Um, I, I moved that the, uh, request from uh, O'Brien Brothers to include senior housing or congregate housing in the CL one, C one LR district on the corner of Kennedy and Kimball. Request be granted.
Okay, uh, do we have a second?
One second.
Okay, on favor. Okay. Other items. Um, Keith Epstein, one of the ones in the packet, suggested a change that seems like it was pretty much in line with the code.
Energy Committee did talk about this last week.
Okay.
Um, following his comment and, um, my understanding of the discussion was that uh, following that they were satisfied in with, as it's drafted, that it's not a essentially loophole that as, um, as Keith was concerned it was.
Great, so no, no change.
So that, that's my understanding is that, um, they no longer, they, and he no longer felt a need for it. Um, but, um, we did not formally hear from him since, so I'm just relaying my understanding of the discussion.
Other items from what we heard or what people had picked up on their phone.
Yeah, Sandy Dooley's point about, you know, about it not being, um, enticing enough for contractors to build affordable housing under the regulations we've adopted. I mean, nobody really, I mean, does she know that that's the state regulation that this is based on?
So the, wh- what she, what she was raising is that there are state, there there are parts of our inclusionary zoning that match the state and there is parts that go above the state. Um, but the state doesn't actually tell us how, what the limits are and how we go above the state. So for example, um, the state is an optional program, first of all, ours is mandatory. It is only required, um, it is, it is five units or twenty percent, whichever is greater. So it doesn't apply to small, effectively to small, um, buildings or developments in the same way. The city is requiring ten percent at ten units and, and a, a different structure at lower numbers of units. Um, her, the, and then the city also gives an additional bonus on top of what the state grants if you do double what the state requires to get their optional bonus. So her, what her suggestion was is currently, we say you have to do double what the state asked for to get that additional floor. She was saying only require a third more than what the state requires. So it's, she was recommending bringing the um, that sort of next jump down, so that people, that developers get more benefit from doing a little bit more instead of having to do a lot more to get the benefit, the second benefit.
But one, one, uh, let me just add one quick thing to it. Um, one other thing that she stated was that today, if you do say sixty units, you get X number of additional units as a bonus. Because in the large scale buildings, you have eliminated density altogether, there is no cap anymore. So there's not a bonus of units because you can build unlimited in theory. So what the regulations give instead is this one floor and an additional floor. And also, as you did in the Form Based Code a few years ago, you've eliminated density altogether, which is a bonus across the board for everybody. So just as context, she framed it as being this, this one bonus. I wanted to be clear that there is this second important one, which is large scale building density is gone.
So they don't need those sort of bonus units because there is no cap?
So just, just repeat that, so I understand correctly. The, the, what we're proposing is in addition to our existing program, the state program is in addition to that.
The state gives one floor.
Yep.
Above whatever your local regulation is. So let's say on Shelburne Road, we allow five, so the state allows six.
Yep.
The added here for the, if you do double as much affordable, is a seventh story.
Okay.
If you go, if you go to forty percent affordable, you get a seventh story.
Yeah.
Sandy's feedback was, you know, maybe you shouldn't have to do an entire other twenty percent to get your seventh story.
I guess Sandy's concern would sound like is her, her understanding was that there is less bonuses than there was before. Is that correct? Or is it more that our existing program was moved anyways because there's unlimited density?
Yeah, so it's a combination of those two things. The, the existing program had numbers that don't line up with the state optional program. So it was like the, a threshold at twelve units instead of ten units, you know, things like that. So we matched some of those numerical thresholds. But we made our entire program mandatory. So if you are above, if you make, if you create more than ten units, you have to do inclusionary. But if you hit the state, um, definition of an affordable housing development, you get those state granted extra floor or a forty percent density bonuses.
And ours was mandatory previously.
And ours was mandatory previously. So it actually dropped the threshold from twelve to ten, um, changed some of the breakdown of the, of the um, percentages of the, that are required sort of through the system. But the backdrop, what a long story, the backdrop to all of this is we have reduced the lot size that a minimum, that a small multifamily or a medium multifamily is required to be on. So you're already allowed to be on a smaller amount of land than you were before. And there's no cap on the number on a, for a large, so a thirteen units or more, um, multifamily building. So it's, it's sort of two different pieces that we see as working together. Technically, yes, you don't get kind of this one for one bonus, sorry, um, because you don't need to, because there's unlimited in the large buildings. And also the smaller buildings, as we've discussed a little bit before, um, the minimum lot sizes are, are low enough that you can functionally put a medium multifamily building on any, almost any lot that will support that size of building. So it removes some of those artificial dimensional standards, well, not artificial, that moves some of those dimensional standards that artificially capped the units by allowing more, more buildings to be built on the same amount of land. Um, and then also there is no cap on the number of units if you can fit the size building on a property. So it, it removes this, an artificial cap on, um, it actually encourages more smaller units than we had previously. Because if you could build a certain sized building and you can only fit forty units in it, you were going to build forty large units that are not affordable. Where when you remove the cap and you don't say it has to be a limit of forty and you can put eighty in instead, or some, you know, somewhere in between, you can add in more units and those are naturally affordable. Which is sort of a different thing than the required perpetually affordable.
Yeah.
Um, it's encouraging more naturally affordable units and doesn't do a lot of, doesn't make a lot of difference to the permanently affordable units.
And again, we don't have density limits for these high density areas anyways.
They're removed. They, they exist today, but they.
The draft removes them.
The draft removed them. So everyone is now only concerned by geometry. So the, the program, even if we kept it forward, wouldn't actually do anything because everyone got infinite bonuses.
I guess the only difference is if someone decided to do a whole series of twelve flex buildings. Because there is a minimum lot size for a twelve flex, but it's only nine thousand square feet. So it's effectively is the smallest lot.
Twelve flex on a nine thousand is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So while technically there isn't, there is a minimum lot size, it is so low for a twelve flex to as, make no difference.
Yeah, but it's, it's stuff like setbacks and height requirements that are basically governing.
And our other requirements for civic space and stormwater and all those other things.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, Sandy, did you want to clarify your comments? I know we just kind of restated some of them.
Well, did you have a? I do not dispute that there's a benefit to eliminating density, um, limits. But my point is, we should have an incentive for developers of market rate housing to go above what's required, a meaningful one. And I don't believe what you have is meaningful because the standard is too high. And it's very, I mean, it's very compared to what we have now. I mean, it's fine. It's more units now, that's, that's out the window. But there should be some meaningful incentive and the extra floor is what you're proposing, which is fine, but it's just that you have to do forty percent instead of twenty percent to get that? I mean, we not only need, and the other thing is permanently affordable housing is different from naturally affordable housing. And, and there's always at least in the Affordable Housing Committee, a very strong emphasis on the need to have permanently affordable, perpetually affordable housing units. So all, my concern was, the discussion was on not what I was trying to focus on. Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you. Thoughts on that?
I mean, is this whole having to exceed the, then, having to exceed the state requirement, which is twenty percent, doubling it? Is that, is that state legislation there or that's what we're adding?
No, where the city is going above what the state is mandating and there's nothing, the state has nothing that says like, if you provide additional bonuses, it must be this other structure. Um, the, so, so no, the state is not telling us what we have to do if we go above what the state requires. Um, what I, the only other thing I wanted to add is that, um, the bonus structure of an additional floor is one, is one option, um, and changing that percentage for getting one additional floor versus getting two additional floors, um, is an option. The other thing, uh, there are other things that incentivize affordable housing um, at different thresholds, um, that are not necessarily a floor. Like we've tossed out many examples in the past about um, sort of variation from different standards, um, fee waivers, other things. There's an, going to be, and I, I mean, commission willing, um, I would love for there to be an ongoing conversation about how to incentivize more permanently affordable housing. This is how we're complying with, uh, the state, the changes in state statute and going a little bit above for now. Um, with the idea that when we, we dealt with, we're dealing with a lot of things in a short amount of time, that then openly, putting in something that works to an extent for now and matches the state, um, structure is really the goal. And then having a much larger conversation about what standards can we vary, what um, permitting fees, what impact fees, like what other things can we do to encourage more permanently affordable, like deeded affordable housing? Um, is a much bigger conversation. So it's sort of like what we were talking about before. It's, there's the things that need to happen in this amendment to, um, comply with state statute that partially, at least most of it went into effect over a year ago. Um, and then there are things that we can continue to build on and we can continue to look at as we, as we move forward. Guess just clarifying that this is not like a, a finished, complete, well polished stone.
Yeah, I, 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 I am receptive to Sandy's argument that if we're gonna do this whole, like, additional above the state thing, that forty percent, I, oh, my intuition tells me that that I do wonder how many projects would actually comply with that. Like, I'm personally, like, yeah, I know, I know this is part of a larger conversation and more things, but just bumping that down to thirty percent, I, I can't immediately see that strikes me as a net positive and just, you know, just changing one digit. Um, but I'm curious to see what other people think.
We did get feedback and recommendations from the Affordable Housing Committee. Um, so we actually do have a committee, um, which, I mean, Sandy's been involved with in the past. I guess I would want to, I don't, I don't know. Be nice to hear from them before we make additional changes to this part, just because they really had their head in it and gave recommendations that I think we use.
So as a, as a quick point of clarification, because I also staffed the Affordable Housing Committee, um, the committee, uh, recommended to ha- have bonuses for additional, so not just have the mandatory program, but to have further incentives above the mandatory program. Um, that committee has been having some trouble getting a quorum for a little while. So they actually haven't met, uh, in, effectively since March. They may, yes, still sort of.
April.
April was two events. It wasn't an actual meeting. Um, so then, that is something that they, they didn't provide any specific recommendation on this bonus structure. Um, that is something we can certainly go back to them with as we move forward and we would, we would absolutely do that. Um, so, so that's the only thing I wanted to say about that. The only other thing is I would agree that yes, it's, it's just changing one digit. There's nothing that changes in the structure of the program, um, that, you know, mucks up anything else. The only other implication is that currently you have a combined maximum for use of inclusionary zoning and TDRs of seven floors. So if you make it easier, this is just pointing out, you know, implications in other parts of the, of the regulations. If you make it easier to get the second, that second bonus floor, you will have fewer TDRs purchased, likely.
That's the transfer development rights, correct? I see.
Yeah, so currently your, your maximum is seven stories in these, most of these areas, it's, it would be seven stories for combined inclusionary and TDRs. So the structure as it's currently written, most large developments would get that sixth story through inclusionary zoning. And if they wanted to go to seven, they would have to buy TDRs and they would probably buy between ten and twenty, um, TDRs to get an additional floor, um, on these larger buildings. So if you, this is just sort of supply and demand situation where if you lower the number of inclusionary units required to get that seventh floor, um, it'll be, become easier to do that instead of buy TDRs. So you're, it's just a balancing act that the commission has to decide on, like encouraging more permanently affordable units versus not selling the TDRs and having the permanent conservation that comes from the other end of that system. So it's just a balance there.
Okay, thanks for clarifying, yeah.
Sure.
I mean, I think I, having a constant TDR, I guess that makes me want to go back to saying, yeah, keep it forty for now, but maybe add that to maybe be this, because I guess I want to better understand how the TDRs, uh, interact with this.
Yep, so that's, yeah, that's up to the commission to do whatever you'd like on that. It's just, um, you have two tools that are capped by the same maximum. So if you make it easier to use one, then it makes it less likely that people will use the other. So that's just the, the policy decision of the commission.
Is bumping up to eight in the tape cartridge that way?
What was that?
Bumping up to eight stories maximum, is that?
That's a different conversation, I think. Yeah.
Um, Paul, you wanna go ahead? You were trying to get my attention?
I just wondered if we were ready for a motion here.
Oh, um, I don't know, there's, I think there were maybe a few things in the packet maybe we needed to address or the legal.
So quick, um, where did you all land straw poll wise on the forty percent versus thirty percent that Colin suggested on the inclusionary bonus floor, the sort of second bonus?
No change to the draft is where we.
Okay.
I think we should consider that thirty percent, yes.
You think we should?
Otherwise, um.
What about that TDR balancing thing?
Yeah, one, one's more important than the other. Housing is more important.
Well, don't you get housing either way?
Yeah, you do.
I mean, it's, it's sort of, at this point, I might make this over simple case, we're kind of pitching affordable housing units against conservation here. Like, we're getting the same units either way. It's just the question is, are we conserving others and see versus adding more affordable housing units? Like, we're getting the same units either way, it's just the question is, are we conserving others and see versus adding more affordable housing units? Yes. I mean, my gut wants to go with prioritizing inclusionary zoning, but I also want to a bit better understand the TDR program is maybe where my thoughts currently are, because I don't want to make this decision without having all the information.
Yeah, I mean, there's still, we we did try to expand the market for TDRs and we did. Um, but if this is a major issue, forty percent is is quite quite a hardship, I would guess.
Yeah, I I I think don't, I think I think we're more or less most in agreement about that, I think, yeah.
Did Sandy recommend a reduction of that to thirty percent?
She did.
Um, I think hers was more generous than the thirty percent in her suggestion.
It was to only require thirty-three percent more than the requirement. So thirty-three percent of twenty percent. Yeah.
Another step.
It's still a reasonable balance. We might lose some TDR uh sales and therefore the associated conservation, but um don't want to make it that difficult for for developers to she's mentioned incentivizing them.
Because I I guess it is true that if if you you're you are making it less likely that people are going to use the TDRs, but you overall are increasing the incentives for more units on the whole, you're you're actually, because we're not reducing the TDR, but we're just making another program even more appealing potentially, is my understanding of this. I guess lowering that threshold is ultimately, yeah, yeah, you are right, I agree with you. It is overall putting more emphasis on housing. Um, so it's not zero, I guess it's not zero sum game, I guess. It's a one loses, one gains, but overall, there's more, overall, there is more incentive structures. A stronger incentive structure to build more units is one, is my understanding of this, if we were to lower the threshold from forty percent.
Yeah, thirty-three.
I would request round numbers.
Just our our development review team would would truly appreciate a round number.
And what was the, what was the round number?
Colin had floated thirty percent.
It's currently twenty, so the state is a twenty.
State requirement is twenty, so requiring thirty is effectively requiring fifty percent more.
Not required, giving an option.
Giving the optional, to get the optional bonus, double bonus floor would require thirty percent.
Ten additional instead of twenty additional is Colin's suggestion percent.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, somebody want to make a a motion?
I'll make the motion. I moved to approve draft amendments to the land development regulations.
No, 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 not that, not that much.
No.
No, no, they're still talking about, okay, we can do that motion if you want.
I would like to.
Go right ahead. Okay.
Either that or.
Before Paul makes that motion, you better go quick.
I could, we, I could move that the forty percent currently required to get the additional
floor.
Floor or additional bonus be reduced to thirty percent.
I second.
Okay, any discussion? On favor?
None.
Okay, I'm not voting for it, so.
So, so what is your vote?
It was a nay.
Okay, so four one, Jessica.
Yeah, so it's still.
Paul, you voted yay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very good, okay, um, anything else? Paul was ready to move on to a full pass on to the city council, I believe.
So.
I think there may be some legal items.
Um, so the biggest legal item is actually the removal of alternative compliance from, it is, it was a a bit of a question of of standards and does it comply with current case law about predictability for applicants? Um, we on the planning staff side don't think that there's a huge amount of immediate implication of removing that option, you would, there was still a standard for modification and waiver from standards in subdivision. It's just this alternative compliance that was structured as a doing a different thing that meets the same purpose kind of generally. Um, the way we've left it with legal is their recommendation would be to remove alternative compliance as an option, but to um keep that dialogue open for how we can be um nimble and in certain ways with modification and stay within the bounds of where our state Supreme Court has landed on such things.
And and just to be clear, it's statutes specifically enable waivers, they don't specifically enable alternative compliance except in planned unit development, so that was sort of the.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, we are, we are agreeing with that uh suggestion. Uh eliminate.
Well, that's our question, you have to answer it.
They check with legal.
Right, so that legal's recommendation and staff's recommendation is to remove the alternative compliance and only use the waivers. It is now your decision because they are the advice people, not the decision.
Okay, well, let's do that.
Yeah, staff and legal recommend, I'm uh
Yeah.
willing to defer to that.
Okay, can we just do a straw poll on that one to comply with the legal recommendation?
Yeah.
On favor of the straw poll?
I'm not sure I really understand this issue.
Yep.
I don't know if I really understand.
Right, so just just in, just to add a little bit to Kelsey's, um in site planning and subdivision, there are the rules. And then the DRB in the draft has a couple of tools at their disposal to adjust the rules. One of them is in a guided manner to waive a standard, so the standard might be uh
Your house has to be yellow.
Although it's conventional mostly.
Well, I'm just as a as a sort of semi-absurd example.
Or, you know, often on Shelburne Road, the standard says twenty foot setback, they have the ability to reduce it to eighteen feet on a given circumstance. That's a modification, a waiver would be an elimination of that down zero feet altogether. But you don't have to do it at all, you don't have to have any setback. An alternative compliance is more of a um, a different way of meeting an objective.
Um, a, an example that we've tossed around and I've tossed around with development review staff is, you know, the first, this isn't true, but say it says that you have to have a bike, a separated bike lane, a separated bike path, a shared use path. But the specific property in question, with the road connecting it to the neighboring property, a private street, has a bike lane and a sidewalk. And the next property says, well, it would be silly for us to have a separated shared use path that goes to nowhere that doesn't match up with this sidewalk and bike lane. So, and alternative compliance for safe passage for cyclists and pedestrians, instead of being a shared use path, the DRB could allow them to do the sidewalk and the bike lane in that specific instance where it matches up with neighboring infrastructure. So you're reaching the same purpose, but you're doing it in a different way. So nothing's being technically waived, you're just doing it, you're reaching the same ends differently.
And and legal is saying they don't.
They're saying that there is um likely and not not enough standards for applicants to be able to tell if what they're proposing will or will not be acceptable. Um, it's it's sort of too vague, too broad, too like, well.
As drafted.
As drafted, just propose a thing and we'll see how it shakes out. Um, that's not uh legally acceptable in Vermont, it needs, you need to have more predictability in your um development regulations. So as drafted, with the timeline, with everything else in the package of amendments, the recommendation was to take it out for now. Have a further discussion with legal and with all of you about how to put similar um types of modification or allow for similar things back in with additional standards and with more guidance to applicants that better threads the needle in in state law.
Right, but not to do it in a.
Not to do it in a rushed way.
In a rushed way.
And either and we just kind of let the DRB kind of figure out waivers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So you had a straw poll that started to get everybody there.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's redo the straw poll. Bye. Okay, good, we'll do that.
Um, so, sure, yeah. Oh, I'm glad.
Other legal items?
Um, in there, they they caught a couple of inconsistencies and typos that are in the red line, but I didn't call out specifically because they were kind of non, non issues. Um, I separated the memo into two fa- two sections, one is kind of necessary updates for internal consistency um and compliance with state statute and city policies. It would be great to know if there was anything in that section of the memo that anyone was had questions about, was concerned about, mostly if you were concerned about it and wanted it removed. Um, those are all things that are reflected in the red line. Um, because it was kind of a a fairly clear uh position.
So that's on page two, three and four of the packet?
Yes.
There?
Yep.
And in the red line?
Yep.
Any concern with those items? Okay, then the second section was um for additional discussion and these are not in the red line, is that or?
Correct, for the, for the, there's, there, for the most part are not in the red line because they're um otherwise explained in this document, like for example, the, you already dealt with the the small residential building types, the lot sizes, that was there's a red line, but it's shown in this memo instead of in the document itself.
So we did A, B was about veterinary hospital outdoor exercise areas.
Yeah, so let me correct what I just said, some of this is in the red line.
This one, this one's in the red line?
This one is in the red line, um, as I, as I noted in article two, there's a different, there's an update to the definition. And then in fourteen eleven J, um, there's a further clarification on outdoor exercise areas for veterinary hospitals and limits their size.
Okay.
Um, and intended design for a single animal at a time, not for like a play yard.
And then C, was this one in there or do we need?
Oh, sorry, and that was, that veterinary hospitals would also require the, it's responsive to the request that was made back in April or early May. Um, we would also recommend that they, that a veterinary hospital, not a commercial kennel, not a pet daycare, all these other things. The veterinary hospital with its limited outdoor use be allowed in the form-based code area, which is effectively city center plus a little bit.
We did talk about that.
Yeah.
For. That was your, that was your direction before, it just never got caught into a draft before now.
Right.
Yeah, there was some, something in the form-based code about allowing for convalescing animals.
So that wasn't, there is an update in the uh definition of veterinary hospital, that there can be animals there overnight, but only in relation to medical treatment, so convalescence from medical treatment, you know, you have a small surgery and have to stay.
Convalescing animals overnight could be howling and barking. I've seen it and heard it.
So that's up to the commission about, that's, I guess.
Think that's a great uh, a great thing to allow.
They would be outside though. So presumably you have some.
My understanding from discuss, uh, we we did a little bit of outreach on on veterinary hospitals and what they require to operate as as a veterinary hospital. Um, overnight boarding of animals for medical reasons is something that cannot be separated, is my understanding, from med- medical treatment for animals. Um, and they don't, it's it's just pet relief, that my understanding, you go out, pee, come back. Um, so if you're, if you're concerned, right, if you're concerned about that indoor noise for overnight animals in the form-based code area, you would have to not allow veterinary hospitals in form-based code.
Okay, I'll think on it.
Okay, um, then C, minimum lot size, non-residential.
This one. Yep, so this is in the um, a pa- uh, C two red line where we we split the all other uses for um as a building type in residential districts versus in commercial districts, and in commercial districts setting the minimum lot size to zero. Um, which would be consistent with the large multifamily and makes regulating things like a large, a larger, you know, re- reasonably large, not terribly large. Um, mixed use building, a lot more simple, like if you suddenly have a minimum lot size for a commercial use inside a build that's on the first floor of a building that doesn't have a minimum lot size, then things get complicated, and it's not what we intended for these uh commercial corridors. So this would only be in the high-scale mixed-use area, so it's a more or less Shelburne Road. Yeah.
Okay, the next one was about PUDs optional, we actually did get this, a comment on this one.
Mm-hmm.
It's, the T and Ds are currently required over ten acres, but this would be a shift to optional.
So this is something that we had flagged for you back in June and you had said, please come back with an analysis and some recommendations, and so we looked at, as we mentioned earlier, there are about eleven properties total that have more than that have more than ten acres of developable land in a residentially enabled district. Of those, uh, two of them have less than ten contiguous acres. So it would be very hard to do an a- an actual traditional neighborhood, so it's really down to nine. Um, that fall into that category, and most of those are between ten and fifteen acres, there are two properties that fall that are, have more than fifteen developable acres. One of them is eight thirty-five Heinsberg Road, the other one is the um Allenwood Estate. The Allenwood Estate um previously was enabled to be either, to be either or both of a traditional neighborhood and a conservation PUD. Um, the uh eight thirty-five Hunsburg Road was required to be a TND. As drafted, everything is required to be a TND, and so um any development on either of those parcels and the other seven, um, the other nine would be required to either build nothing or the uh a TND to its completeness. Um, the other component that we got some feedback on in one of the listening sessions was that uh, in the last couple of years in where costs have gone, infrastructure costs have gone up substantially, and so while that may not necessarily be a problem at a larger scale traditional neighborhood, at the ten acre size, there are inefficiencies built in of potentially having to do sort of a ring road around it, which may have become less feasible in the last three years than they were before. And certainly, the number of properties, as I noted in the memo, that were applicable when you started this project back in twenty sixteen is substantially changed, the city's changed a lot. Um, we look to see how does a traditional neighborhood differ from just your standard subdivision regulations now, because you've been increasing a lot of the requirements in the standard subdivisions. And the most significant thing that we saw as a difference was that the traditional neighborhood and also the conservation PUD, incidentally, had a minimum density. Um, which is not a requirement of standard subdivision today. Um, and also, as I think um Sandy Dooley had mentioned earlier, there is a stronger requirement for a mix of dwelling unit types. Um, in most other ways, the traditional neighborhood and your subdivision regulations have become much, much closer. The biggest place where they became way closer than they used to be was what you just talked about with lot sizes. Act forty-seven sort of flipped its on its head, whereas it used to be that you had, you know, nine, ten thousand square foot lots, but in a traditional neighborhood, you could do five thousand square foot lots, now that's enabled, period. So the difference between the mandated T TND and just a standard subdivision of what you could do is was here is now kind of here. Looking at the fact pattern, looking at the circumstances of these, you know, seven or eight, nine properties that are applicable, looking that that are sort of marginally sized TNDs, and then considering the two remaining ones of, is it the planning commission's objective to require the full development of the entire um, uh, Allenwood property? And if, you know, the commission were to say, well, what if we made it twenty acres instead of ten, then you're down to one parcel, which could look a lot like spot zoning. So, or or opens questions.
Blamatic.
Yeah. Um, and so our recommendation, and this is entirely up to you, was to make the traditional neighborhood optional and to create the carved out of two acres that Jordy spoke about, and to establish a minimum density of And to create the carve-out of two acres that Jordy spoke about and to establish a minimum density of. What did we say?
You said no minimum density.
No, to, now to establish one. There isn't one currently in sub- subdivision, but to establish one of.
We had a, we, in our dr- in the memo, there was an option for, to, to more closely mimic the T and D, you would have two. Minimum densities, one that was eight for fifty percent of your property and one that was four for the other fifty percent of your property. Or you could just do six across the board or some other number in between those things. Um, we recommended the. Having a kind of a neighborhood core that's a denser thing, that's the eight units an acre. And just as clarification, again, this is. Planned density, um, you could have a situation where someone decides not to build all of the things. We can't force someone to build all of the things. But there has to remain space for the density as planned.
So as drafted in, as our recommendation was that if you have between four, two and four buildable acres, it's four units an acre. Above four buildable acres, it would be fifty percent, has to be at least four units an acre, fifty percent. Has to be at least eight units an acre and that sort of mimics the T and D. So that's the recommendation.
Here you go.
The world's your oyster. To discuss tonight or.
Or to continue.
To continue because it's nine fifty-three.
Can you pick out a couple of the positives on the T and D that might be lost if somebody opts not to?
Yeah, um, currently, which is something that we can correct in the future, um, the T and D has a. More of a, there's a cottage court building type that's allowed. That is something that we didn't get a chance to address in this draft in a sort of citywide way. We could in the future, but that is currently a difference. Another is the civic space requirement in the T and D is fifteen percent. In a major, regular major subdivision, it is ten percent. So it does reduce that civic space requirement a little bit. The T and D has more strict. Housing mix requirements, s- major subdivision does have a housing mix requirement, um, how, like built by building type or by number of bedrooms. In units, um, but it is not to the same sort of prescriptive level as the T and D. It is mostly things that the T and D prescribes something much more specific, a breakdown that's more specific and then the major subdivision. Does a lot of that, but in a more general way.
The T and D requires at least five percent of the developable area to be something non-residential.
Yep.
However, your discussion of the limited neighborhood residential opens up. As an option more than ever existed before to do that, it's just not a requirement anymore. And then I think that there's sort of, that there are some smaller design features associated with. You know, how, how a building faces a lot, um, it is, it, the T and D forces more alley design.
Yes.
Than the subdivision, though both have the residential design standards that talk about the maximum amount of garage space in the street.
Yep.
Civic space is the same?
Civic space is fifteen percent in T and D and ten percent in major subdivision. So it is a reduction.
And then I just want to make sure I understand this all correctly. Uh, so currently the T and Ds are required on these.
For a certain size property.
Over ten acres, right? What was the justification originally for acquiring it and why are we now changing it to?
Right, so, so just a minor clarification. On a property of more than four acres and then ten acres to, um, for, for different applicability. A planned unit development was mandatory.
Okay.
In some districts, the only available planned unit development was a T and D. In some districts, it was a T and D or a conservation planned unit development, which was a different type of PUD where you conserve the bulk of the land. And built on a small portion.
Okay. Everything over four acres is the existing requirement.
Yes.
One of those two or in some of them, one in other ones, one of the two for.
Because of what happened with Act forty-seven and the minimum densities granted, the conservation PUD really couldn't work anymore in that way. And so that is proposed to be eliminated in its entirety.
Okay.
The result is that areas, parcels that were required to be a T and D. That doesn't change too much, but the ones that had the choice of being a T and D or a conservation PUD have lost. One of the options now. So we are, you've now, in the draft mandated that it apply to. More properties than it did before.
I see. And in these, and these examples, that is a pretty significant difference.
It's a fairly significant difference. Yeah. And, and actually in some cases previously. The mandate was for a conservation PUD. And now with that eliminated, it is still mandated to be a PUD, so it kicks it over to be mandated to be a T and D. So properties like the. Right? So like properties like the long property would fall now to be mandated to be a T and D when they previously could have been a. Conservation PUD or a T and D. Um, so in the southeast quadrant, that was. Most of the southeast quadrant mandated a conservation PUD. That's gone. It defaults now. Barring other action of yours to being mandating a T and D because the planned unit development is still mandated. Does that make sense?
I see.
I know I just said a lot of the same three letters.
So the, wh- what was the ju- what's the reason for putting in, putting back the minimum density? I know we have. You can't, you, you have to allow at least five.
Right, you don't have to. We were trying to look to see for these properties. You had previously back in twenty twenty-two, found that it was important that they have certain characteristics. That they built, that they, with the exception of the carve-out of less than two acres, that they be designed to be built with a certain amount. If you chose to not require the T and D and eliminated the minimum density. Then these parcels could, could conceivably be built as estate lots. You know, two acre lots each across.
Or one acre lots.
One acre lots across, you know, an entire subdivision. And.
With the house in the middle.
That becomes quite different from a T and D. So in our recommendation, we're trying to, how do we mimic? As close to a T and D without some of the owner's components, I guess is.
Yeah.
What our recommendation was.
Is there such a thing? Is there such an option as like, just kind of creating one, it's the best in both worlds? You know, that could be universal, because, you know, we're not talking, un- unless one or the other has a tremendous benefit on certain kinds of property.
One or the other which.
Well, either a T and D or a, or a major subdivision. If, if one or the other had a, had a real benefit for a certain property. That was obvious, then you'd keep both, but is there, is there that, is that the case?
Within the recommendation to make T and D optional, so you still could do either.
Well, I mean. I guess the, the question is, you know, is it, is it more just a personal prefer, the developer's preference or is it? Or is it something about the property itself that, you know, would lend itself to one or the other? You mentioned the larger. The larger properties themselves to the T and Ds.
And the squarer properties.
And the squarer properties, yeah.
Right, and, and I might say then the inverse to say that the less square, smaller properties lend themselves less well to a T and D.
Right.
So I think that's the way we looked at it from the, which ones lend themselves less well. Conceivably, there's, there's nothing, if somebody philosophically wanted to do a T and D. You could do it through a major subdivision. If, if you are philosophically aligned that way. The thing that you would get as a developer for being a T and D is, uh, you would get the benefits. In your DRB process of um fewer variables. So those who may not agree with your vision, you'd say, I'm a T and D. I'm only allowed, it's, it's a tighter box which is. Uh, has some challenges, but also has the benefit of a developer is guaranteed that tighter box. So. It, it, that's, it's a good thing for developers too, if they want to do it.
Pretty swayed by the staff recommendation here, at least myself.
Optional, seems reasonable.
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay, so we're gonna do a straw poll to go with the staff recommendation of optional.
Though we need to decide whether we want to do the two-tiered eight versus four versus.
You could also discuss that, yeah.
It's a separate.
That's separate, okay, separate.
Okay, um, straw poll in favor of optional? Okay, so the next one was the minimum plant density, which is item double I. For subdivision over two acres, which was just explained.
Yep.
We're gonna look at it separately. Thoughts on this to be a little closer to the existing. PUD program? When adopting the PUDs, there was a lot of discussion about how this required minimum density was. It's kind of a big part of it to get the walkability, the efficient use of land. Justify the infrastructure investment.
Just the only uh thing I would add to it is, we, we thought. A, a lot about this, is, is A too high? Is that, is that too much of an expectation? And then we, we came back to a reminder that. Under the, the standards that you just agreed to, a fourplex can be on five thousand square feet. So you could achieve eight units an acre with.
You can actually achieve eight.
Much, this, it is. That's not a very high bar considering that a fourplex can be on the same size lot as a single unit building. Or single family homes that, um, you know.
On five thousand square foot lots.
On five thousand square foot lots. And that's only for half of the project. So that, that was our thinking was that eight. Um, it is, is both consistent with the T and D. It initially felt a little bit. You know, we want, we were sort of doing gut check on, is this too high? But it does. Match pretty nicely with the other standards.
And just as a reminder, like, it doesn't actually have to be built. It has to be planned for and the space needs to be reserved. So you can't have your one acre lot with your house in the middle. And to, you know, so there's no way to build around it and subdivide in the future, but you could build your smaller house in the corner.
Well, hence, so when they do build it though, they, so it's basically like, they have to. For what, for stuff they do build has to comply with this, but there still needs to be space for future development. If they were to ever want, so i- i- I mean, am I ever saying this is essentially trying to preserve the durability infill or? Am I?
It's sort of both. The intention is that when you build, you build um out of, at a. Density that either currently builds the density this way or reserves the space for future density to be able to be built that way.
So hypothetically, if they were to develop half their area at four units per acre and then they could say, oh, one day will develop the rest and it'll all be eight? Is that like something that we?
They would have to show, you'd have to show in your subdivision plan how you were, would plan to do that.
But you don't have to do that.
Correct.
Just need to make sure, you need to prove.
You need to show the, you need to subdivide the land in a way that shows that you can achieve that density.
This is only for PUDs?
No, this is subdivision. This is a replacement for this, this is effectively a replacement for the standard that was only in T, in, in PUDs. In, and putting it into all subdivisions because of the way that the um PUD program has been reduced.
Yeah, no, I like the second piece there where between two and four acres. Have the minimum density of four units per acre and you don't get up into that eight units per acre. This is more consistent with the. Current draft, I think. For the small.
What's confusing is because, you know, we talked about lot size everywhere else and then we get back to the units per acre here. If that has the potential to become confusing.
I can, I, I hear where you're coming from. Um, the idea, idea was that the um. If you just say minimum lots, if you go with just the minimum lot sizes, you're just doing those minimum lot sizes. The intention here is that it's because you're, you're sort of averaging over a larger area. So you could put a fourplex and a single family home or two, three single family homes and then a duplex and then something else. As long as that contiguous area that's fifty percent of your property meets that density requirement. So it allows for more mix without fully prescribing exactly what that mix needs to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, straw poll on including this language as shown. Hi?
Wait, oh, oh. Sorry, I may have just, hang on, so, minimum. Okay, so it's, okay, so we're doing the eight and four, not the six.
Yes.
Okay.
Eight and four, it's more than four.
Eight and variety.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay, good. So the one remaining item in our packet was about the multiple principal building that's on the lot. Does anyone have questions about that one? Okay, I guess we're good with that one. Okay, Paul?
Uh, hang on, we have one more, one next set before you.
I needed to uh circle back to master plan exemption for two acres. Did you land on two acres for that exemption? The previous conversation?
Yeah, I thought we did that already.
Yeah, it was, it was just sort of, it sort of petered out as a discussion and we circled to other things. As you said, there was some jumping around.
Oh, yeah, we wanted the, the two acres.
Okay. Um, and then before we move on, uh, further, is veterinary hospitals allow it? There's two pieces to it. There's the changes in the definitions that are the definition and the um. How outdoor exercise areas are regulated that are in the draft. Um, there's that piece. And which is part of the separating the veterinary hospitals from dog daycares and other things. The second part of the piece is, I think what Michael was, was raising is, do you want to allow that as a use in the form-based code? Yes?
No, and, yeah.
Okay. Just being totally clear. And we have two surprises.
Little ones, I promise. Okay, first one, uh, this, we promised this at the end. First one is um in the appendix B, which is your uh transportation standards. About how you do traffic studies, there was a Supreme Court decision that came down this year. I'm not going to go into detail, but basically it said that uh you, it was about traffic impact fees. And the court ruled unanimously that uh a generalized requirement. Was not sufficient at the municipal level, that the minis- that the applicant had to have the right to study something individually. That we couldn't just have, this is the formula, you must always pay it this way. And so currently, um, our transportation standards uh say that to do a traffic study. If it's in the Institute of Traffic Engineers um trip generation study uh manual, you must use that. To calculate the number of trips. That's not really viable any longer. Um, and so we are still recommending that it be used. Hang on. Um, however, we have added one line at the recommendation of our consultant. And. Screen, keep working with me. It, uh, the, the draft that you had in your packet said, an applicant may additionally prepare and submit a custom trip generation study at their sole expense. The proposed addition is to give it a little bit of. Boundaries as to what that needs to be, which is to study it by a licensed engineer, collecting at least three local sites. Collecting data five more sites is preferable. So that's the recommendation of our traffic consultant.
Just the addition of that last sentence?
Just that last sentence. It's.
Okay.
Can probably be something that we study further, but as a, making sure that we are crossing our Ts and nodding Is at this moment, that's the recommendation.
Okay.
Yes, I have a possible to revisit at some point, because, you know. To be, i- i- if you're, if you're the one commissioned to study and you have a strong incentive structure to one. And no number like, you know, things can get massaged. I guess we'll make sure, Garriels, make sure that isn't happening.
Right, and a reminder that the DRB always has the authority to conduct an independent technical review of any study that's done. This is just telling that they should be doing three studies so that we're not having an argument of, oh, I did one count somewhere and that was sufficient.
I see, okay.
And then yours? Any, any issues with that?
No.
The last melon. Oh goodness.
So, um, this is the dimensional table, um, does not reflect the changes that you made over here. So, um, this is the dimensional table, um, does not reflect the changes that you made over here earlier. Um, the unfortunately, un, reasonably undistinguishable light red is what was in your packet. And the bolder dark red, which is primarily over here, is what we would additionally recommend to add. Um, this, these two columns reflect the additional maximums. Um, they, they regulate the increases that you can have using in the inclusionary, the state level inclusionary zoning. Um, or TDRs. It puts a little bit more of a guardrail on the TDR um, table that you've looked at in the past. Um, the other thing, so here it's, you can have one additional floor on a small multi or medium multi. It's um, and the, that additional floor can be up to an additional twelve feet above these numbers here. The twenty five is for a flat roof, the twenty eight is for a pitched roof. Um, down here, we made, um, previously, the numbers were thirty five and forty. Here, um, it didn't make sense for that to be different than the commercial uses for similar reasons, as I stated before about minimum lot size. Um, so now large multi-unit buildings and a non-residential use in a commercial district have the same height. Um, both standard maximum and the bonus uh, maximum.
The, the big thing, just to be, because I know it's really late, was um, the regulation said you got another story. But it didn't say anything about feet.
Yeah.
Feet were still there. And so this is trying to say, you know, what, what is a story? So in the case of the lower part of it, that's two fourteen foot stories, which is what is uh, uh, foot stated elsewhere.
Yep.
Twelve feet is assigned for the mediums, and instead of getting two floors bonus, you get one floor bonus maximum on these low scale buildings. Because they're, to have a four-story, three-plex seems a little excessive. At least as a, yeah.
So, so my understanding is, we have to give them the density bonus, but we don't want. Sorry, we don't want to have a double density on the lower ones.
It was an, that, that, yes. And also, we had both stories and feet. Let me back this up for one second. The heights question in this table is a much bigger project. Um, just something that we decided a few months ago was sort of too large and a little bit disconnected from the Act forty seven. Um, H six eighty seven stuff that we were, we chopped it off and said, this is where, this is the limit, and that will be the next project, or there will be another project. These are the couple of tweaks that need to happen to make our heights table make any sense. In the context of those bonus floors that you get for inclusionary zoning under state law.
So we, we know it's not a.
There's a lot of.
But it makes it functional.
Yeah, it's not a perfect solution there. We will be coming back to these height numbers in feet versus these numbers in stories. That are from different sides of the building, um, and, you know, other, other things in this table. But this is sort of the, the way we thought of as a, um, a, a cleanup to really sort of dot the final Is and cross the Ts. To make the table functional for now, and then we will come back.
Make sure the DRB is not stuck with.
With crossing standards. And the only other related thing is adding, um. I actually never added times floor in the um, TDR structure. We talked about it being kind of a Lego, Lego bra, Lego block. I never actually added into the article nineteen definition. As two thousand square feet multiplied by a, a floor. It was just the, the flat. It was the two D, not the three D. So that's the only change in, in that side.
Issues with the table?
Are we, are we gonna um, submit it as it is now and then work on it later, or do you want to defer this?
No, we would, um, I mean, the clean version, the red, we clean up the red line version and the clean version, so it'd look better than this. But we would submit to city council now, this version that has feet and stories and these extra two columns. And then in the next six months to a year, um, this would be a project of the planning commission to, to more critically look at these heights. And um, make this table make more, more sense than it currently does.
But it's not a one meeting.
But it's a several meeting conversation, probably.
I move to approve the draft recommended amendments to the Land Development Regulations, number RD. Twenty four, um, LDR twenty four oh one through LDR twenty four ten. And to submit them alongside the previously approved planning commission report to the city council.
So quick clarification, there are the updated, there are edited reports. So just with the reports as updated.
With, in other words, with the motions we've made tonight and the straw polls.
Yes, make sure.
Well, okay, then.
Yeah, agreed, agreed upon edits and um, updated reports.
As amended tonight. Second.
Was that good enough?
Um, if you could just say, and with updated reports as provided in the packet.
And updated following.
And double updated reports.
And double updated and maybe more.
Okay, that's, that's better. Thanks.
Would you second that?
Not quite sure. I think you should read it again. Read it back to us.
The, the motion?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't write it verbatim.
Of course.
Well, I can, I've got the, you know, the motion without the amendments here.
So can, can I, can I take a crack at it for you?
Yep.
Um, that the motion be to uh, approve amendments, LDR twenty four oh one through twenty ten. Incorporating all of the amendments presented and agreed upon this evening by straw poll or vote. Further to amend the planning commission reports on LDR twenty four oh one through twenty ten. To reflect those changes.
There's, there was some motions as well.
Right, I, I said, and decided upon eh, this evening. So, and to submit the entire package to the city council.
Is that your motion, Paul?
Yeah.
Good, yeah.
Second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Okay, on favor? That was unanimous. Wonderful, thanks for hanging in there. We do try to end before now, um, typically, and we, can we just adjourn?
You have one very quick, one minute item.
Okay, the sign thing.
Well, can skip, skip minutes if you want. Um, sign package is something that was approved twelve years ago by the planning commission. This is substantially similar, but it has a little more things in it. Under state law and this billboard law, it is required to be approved by the planning commission and council. This is in order to get the signs to do the bridge over the interstate. Bike pad bridge. So it is the same sign package with more detail. You would.
Can we?
Motion to.
End the meeting?
No, he's saying he wants us to vote on this other thing.
On the bridge.
I'm okay with signs on a bridge.
So it's the sign package that replies citywide, but it's sort of critical path in this effort to get the bike pad bridge.
You want us to do it tonight?
Yes, please.
Well, I liked the signs before, so I don't.
It's the same sign package as just, it was a limited subset before. This is for ones that have, that the pedestrian scale ones essentially to go over the. Bike pad bridge and elsewhere. So it's the exact same set of.
You like them?
Yes, very, very much a big fan.
I'll make the motion to approve the signs.
Thank you.
Second, okay, um, on favor?
All right.
Okay, so they can postpone minutes.
We're skipping the minutes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for everyone online who's stuck around.
Nice first meeting.
And good night.
Paul, this is the shortest one they had all year.
That's not true.
I'm just kidding.
I was expecting that to be a public hearing, no, wait.
Thank you, Ryan.